All right. Good evening and welcome to the February 11th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. This public meeting of the Falmouth zoning board of appeals is physically closed to the public in order to avoid group congregation. There are alternative public access measures in place. The meeting is being televised as is customary via Falmouth community television. And real time public comment can be addressed to the board using the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. For Zoom login instructions, you can go to www.falmouthma.gov/zba. Introduce the board at this time. My name is TJ Hurry. I'm the chair of the board. Ken Foreman is the vice chair. Bob Dugan is the board's clerk. Ed Van Kuren is a full voting member. Scott Solinsky is a full voting member as well. Mary Berry is an associate member. James Morris is an associate member as well. Also with us tonight is Norrie Stockman, who is the zoning administrator. Ashley DeMello, who is the recording secretary for tonight. And we also have with us from the Falmouth IT department, Justin Shanahan and Adriana Pantano. And our friends at SCTV are helping us out as well. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and we consider requests for special permits, variances and appeals. That have been provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant. And also from the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin new sharing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file such as referrals from town departments. And summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should only be directed at the project itself and we ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. So all members of the public wishing to speak should at the appropriate time of the night will click the raised hand icon. Using the Zoom app and again, that's available at www.falmouthma.gov/zba. So like I said, at the appropriate time in the night, we will ask you to raise your hand or click the raised hand icon using Zoom. We will get you elevated. We do ask you to state your name and address for the record along with any question, comment, or concern you may have about the project. Board will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. And the alternative, the board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. And of course, after the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decisions, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to deny or approve would be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to our agenda for the night, we do have public comment. We have two continuations, three new hearings. And a few items on our open meeting agenda. So first up is public comment. This public comment period is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So if anyone is out there that wishes to make any sort of comment on something that is not on the agenda. Go ahead and click the raised hand icon within the Zoom app and we will get to you in a minute. Okay, not seeing anything right now for public comment, so we will go right ahead into our continuations. Up first, we have the continuation of application 61-20 Echo Land Development LLC, zero Percival Road Lot 4 and T Ticket. And where we left off last time, there were some technical issues with the applicant. So technically we did. Open the hearing, but we did continue because the applicant was unable to make their presentation before us. And let's see, I think it's Steve McKenzie. If Steve McKenzie could be elevated, please.
And Mr. Chairman, there's been two letters submitted to the files since we opened the applications, so I'd like to read them in advance.
Sure, go ahead and read those in, Bob.
This is from Monday, January 25th. And it's says Dear Zoning Board of Appeals, my name is Jenna. My name is Jenny A. Scala. I have lived on Harness Drive and T Ticket for 42 years. I purchased a home on Harness Drive 13 years ago, next to a home my parents own on Harness Drive. We are the sole owners of the left side of Harness Drive. Harness Drive abuts a large portion of Percival Road. I have owned and operated my family childcare business out of six Harness Drive for 18 years. The neighborhood is quiet, calm and serene residential privately owned dead end road. It's been brought to my attention that there is a proposed 40B with 16 units. With each unit housing three bedrooms on Percival Road. This proposed project would be a devastating direct negative impact to my business and the safety of the children and families that live here. Let alone my own children. My property abuts this proposed project. The proposed development, if it were to forego its proposed 16 unit three bedroom plan would severely impact my childcare business, the children in our families due to extreme safety concerns. There was a huge safety concern due to the fact that there are three large family childcares that abut this proposed 40B project. Two large family childcares are located on Harness Drive and one is located on Trotting Lane, also a dead end of this property. These three family childcares have been in operation from 18 to 38 years. These large family childcares all serve 10 or more families per day. We already have an excess of traffic on Harness Drive due to these families dropping off and picking up their children. I feel that if we were to add 16 homes with three bedrooms each, it would probably total 48 plus cars to this small vicinity of T Ticket. This would be a severe safety concern for all that reside here, especially the children. Harness Drive and Trotting Lane are barely passable two lane roads. Due to how narrow these roads are, one car always has to go up on the grass or wait to pass the others. Harness Drive as an access road is out of the question because it would put us as residents and the children in our care in imminent danger. And besides, which harness drive is private. Trotting Park Road is the gateway to Harness Drive, Trotting Lane and the proposed Percival Road project. Percival Road in itself is a traffic issue. It is a one lane dirt road. The people living there also have been there for decades. Due to the 40B development down by McDonald's, which is located on Trotting Park Road. The condo development that is behind the 40B development also located on Trotting Park Road. And the newly added 40B condo development in the middle of Trotting Park Road, also located on Trotting Park Road. There is already a traffic issue as of now. Keep in mind Trotting Park Road is less than a mile long. Traffic is horrendous. All three of these large developments are within one half mile of this new proposed Percival development. We have a tremendous amount of traffic on Trotting Road right now, especially from the hours of 7:30 to nine in PM hours of 3:00 to 5:30. The proposed 40B Percival project will be a nightmare for all of us to use Trotting Park as a route to and from work. And hazard for the residents and the children to live, play and stand at bus stops. The proposed 16 unit three bedroom project would add at least another 48 vehicles. To the safety issue and neighborhood congestion. This is a residential area. There is no school, grocery store, public transportation within a mile of this proposed 40B development. The devastation to our ecological environment here would be irreversible. We have four hawks that reside here account on this forage to survive. We have coyotes, box turtles. And an owl who also resides in the proposed area. We have ducks who migrate here every spring to have the babies in a family of green heron that reside here every spring. Pictures available if needed. The project will destroy the circle of life for these animals. Not to mention the lady slippers that flourish in the patch of woods yearly. The proposed plan is very vague when it comes to a buffer. It's clear the landowner does not want traffic using his end of Percival. And it's also clear that Mr. Gonzales will be a substantial buffer. If the proposed plan is to pass, then what is the proposed plan to buffer my neighborhood? How will this project maintain our safety, the safety of the children and the serenity of which we now know our neighborhood to be? What will this project do to maintain the ecological aspects to save the animals that rely on this forage here? It is also very important we protect the animals. In their circle of life. Lastly, I ask you, the zoning board and the town manager, after reading this letter aloud for the public to hear. That you protect myself, my family and my neighbors from the backlash that happened after the last ZBA meeting. Two abutters of this project were threatened by the owner of the Percival property. One resides on Percival and one on Trotting Lane. I can only speak on the Trotting Lane incident. Hours after the last ZBA meeting, my aunt who owns one of the family childcares was threatened in her backyard during work hours. With the exact words were, those kids, you messed with me and now I'm going to mess with you. No idea what was meant by these comments, but they are very scary, very uncalled for and very threatening. This incident has been documented at the Falmouth Police Station. Another incident which happened on Harness Drive only hours after the last ZBA meeting was an incident. Where the neighbors of Percival Road, Harness Drive and Trotting Park Road have a path through Mr. Gonzales property. A path that has been there for over 40 years. Horses trot through it, people walk through it, the kids use it to get to and from the farm. The kids also use it to go to bus stops so they don't have to stand on the busy traffic bounds. Traffic bound ends of Percival. Kids also use it to meet kids to play and many animals use it to go to and from. It is Mr. Gonzales property, so he can do with it what he sees fit. That being said, Mr. Gonzales followed a group of toddlers in a bobcat and smashed down branches and trees, not even one minute after the children exited the path. This occurred the day after the ZBA meeting. All the children witnessed this erratic behavior along with seven adults from five different homes. The neighbors on Percival Harness Drive and Trotting Lane all witnessed the children happy and walking down the road. And then being followed by the bobcat driven by Mr. Gonzales. This was a bit extreme and very frightening for the children and us to witness. We now have a huge pile of trees and brush three feet from the end of Harness Drive that Mr. Gonzales has left there for us as an eyesore. I ask you, the zoning board, to please come down and take a look. We have all lived here for many, many years and are all entitled to our own opinion without bias, and that is why I'm writing you this letter. Either this project is legal or it is not. While the town and state make this decision, I would like you to know that we are definitely fearful down here for our safety. Due to the irrational behaviors that happened only hours after the last ZBA meeting. We are hoping that after this meeting tonight, there'll be no more threats or negative. Directed towards any of us on Harness, Trotting Lane or Percival Road. Thank you for your time. Sincerely appreciated. Again, Jennifer Scala, Six Harness Drive, T Ticket Mass. And then there's one more letter and this is from Deborah C. Witter, 211 Trotting Park Road. Chairman Terrence Hurry, I am concerned about the impact that the construction development of the above referenced project will have on the entire neighborhood and wildlife that we enjoy our environment with. This letter is a follow up to my first letter and the selectmen's meeting held on Thursday, December 10th, 2020. Prior to the meeting, I was unaware that the developer had planned an entrance along Harness Lane into the project. I object to this as it will impact three daycare centers that have been in that area for many years. Working parents need good, safe daycare centers for their children so they can work and support their families. And these daycare centers are highly qualified and regarded. They are currently located on a road that is very private and sparsely traveled. This is also a wildlife corridor. On November 9th, 2020, at 7:00 AM in the morning, six coyotes traveled through my property and into the wooded area behind my house, which is located. That is designated for this project. I am sending you a digital photo taken of these animals. We have coyotes, turkeys and deer that frequent our properties through the wooded area. Your project will surely impact this. In conclusion, I object to the construction of such a densely populated project. And attached to that letter are the digital photos of the wildlife that are mentioned.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And I should mention that the voting members on this project are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren and Scott Solinsky. And for the applicant, you are currently muted, but we do have Mr. McKenzie and I believe Mr. Montero is with him as well. So where we left it off last time, we did need to continue the hearing because of technical issues. So if you start from the top, Mr. McKenzie, I know that'll be appreciated. We can hear you.
First of all, we apologize for all our technical difficulties the last time and appreciate your indulgences in continuing us till tonight. For the record, my name is Stephen McKenzie. I'm here with Edward Montero of Echo Land Development LLC. And the application before you is for the comprehensive home to build a 16 unit, single family home, three bedroom. Development on 5.5 acres of agriculturally zoned land. Each of the homes, as I said, will be a three bedroom home and the development will be a mix of ranches and Cape Cod style buildings. Ranging from 1,400 to 1,800 square feet. And each of the homes will meet all of the lot coverage and zoning setbacks on the chapter 2 party. The density of this project is proposed at 2.9 units per acre, which is the lowest density of any 40B development proposed or approved. In the town of Falmouth. The site is surrounded by 16 single family houses and we're proposing 16 as well. Our original plan was to utilize Percival Road as the access to and from the development. And to improve Percival Road, which is a mostly dirt paved in some certain areas by widening and paving the road. Additionally, the applicant would be bringing town water to the street, which does not presently exist. As well as bringing in gas service and providing fire hydrants, which do not exist today. All these would have provided a safer roadway with utility improvements to the existing homes that are on Percival. At the first hearing, the board was provided with a letter and a deed from attorney Brian Wall. Who represents three of the abutters on the other side of Percival Road. In which states that this property has no legal rights in Percival Road. And that the applicant must modify your plans in a manner such that the access for the proposed lots in Boings is provided entirely upon and within the 5.5 acre parcel. But we naturally assumed that the property had access and legal rights within Percival because of the box it. And we commissioned a title examination to determine those rights. The title is complicated and is not yet completed by the lock room that is doing the work. So as Brian suggested in his letter, we have designed a new plan, which has been filed with the board. And we present that to you tonight, which provides all access entirely within the 5.5 acre parcel. The plan is still for 16 single family homes with town water and gas service being provided to the new homes. There will also be an easement between Lot 10 and Lot 11. To the town of Falmouth to bring a water line down to Harness Drive, which will complete the loop, which is what they prefer to have us do. There's also a large tee between Lot 14 and 15 for the fire rescue department, as well as two hydrants that have been provided on the roadway. Although not shown on the plans as of yet, because we were rushing to get them into. There will be a natural buffer provided along the southerly boundary on each of the lots for the benefit of the homeowners on Harness Drive and Trotting Lane. It'll be a minimum of 10 feet. If there's possibility to even greater than that, we're certainly open to that consideration. And speaking of harness drive, there's been much concern that the homeowners on harness drive concerning access from this development onto harness drive and ultimately onto trotting lane. Please be aware that the applicant has never had any intention of accessing through harness drive or through trotting lane. We understand that there are at least three daycare centers operating in the small area. And the idea of accessing through harness drive was first proposed by the town. The town, during the town's development staff meeting at our very first meeting. We said it at that time that we had no legal rights in harness drive and that we had no intention of ever using harness drive or trotting lane. And that we're only intending to use both accesses of Percival Road. And now we'd be looking to use just the new roadway that's shown on the new plans that have been filed with the board. And that's essentially our presentation.
All right. I'm sorry, what was that?
I say we have the new site plan, if you'd like to see that.
Sure, if you can share your screen, that'd be great, especially since it's a new plan. And you said in your testimony, you'll be getting us copies of that new plan?
The new plan was filed a week or so ago. The only thing that's not on the plan right now is the buffer.
Oh, just the buffer. Okay, thank you.
And that will be divided at a minimum of 10 feet all along the southerly border between all the folks on charting lane and on harness drive. We just have a little difficulty pulling the plans up. Are you able to see the plan?
It shows a file explorer at the moment. I think you'd have to open up the file itself.
You probably need to just double click on the file you select.
Thank you, Norrie.
Did that again? Can you see it?
It's not, not up yet.
You see it now?
There it is. Yep, it's up.
The plan is three sheets.
Showing one sheet right now and I can see the Trotting Park Road. It's upside down.
So the whole, the whole sheet isn't showing. Is there a way to minimize the sheet to fit on the screen?
No, that's where it came from the engineers when they, when they did it.
Unfortunately, Jack Lind is colleague who is the engineer. I was supposed to let you know that he had a conflict tonight. He had a fire commitment and put the town of Mashpee on another zone meeting.
Not to worry. We can, we can work through it though. Can you show us where that, where the new entrance is if it's not on Percival?
It actually on that plan, it does show the entrance. Just south of Percival. Coming out to Trotting Park Road.
Sure. The screen went back to the file explorer, so we didn't, we didn't quite get to see that.
So Steve, what's the date of this plan?
January 28th.
Do we have hard copies of this plan, Norrie?
Yes, we do. That's why I asked that. We do have hard copies.
It's just for manner of presentation during the public hearing that they need to show them on the screen for the public.
Yeah, especially since not everyone has access to Town Hall. So Mr. McKenzie, you're showing the new street coming off of Trotting Park Road. And following the lot line. Up against Percival Road.
Will actually be just a chairman of buffer between our road and Percival Road.
Right, I understand that. I'm just trying to. Just trying to get the layout.
You'll see on the hard copy plans, the. Full line is the proposed water main and then just north of that, you'll see the, in south, you'll see the two entrances. But one, two sides of the entrance coming off of Trotting Park Road.
Understood.
That shows the new, new gas line, the water main and the two fire hydrants.
So Mr. Chairman, my only concern is in this because we just were in an open meeting that anything that we're looking at tonight that we're discussing has to be displayed. So if they can't do it tonight, maybe at the next meeting, they could.
No, we can do it. Let me get some. Is there someone on technical that can, can Tom help me?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I, I have, I have the files. I'm just trying to get them to you.
Maybe if there's. Maybe if, is there any, any other plan that you can show us?
I'm just having a hard time bringing it up on the screen.
Sure. All right, well. Why don't you, you work on that and we'll just turn it to board questions. That way we can keep things moving. All right, Ken, do you have any questions?
Well, I was wondering if they could go over the waivers that they're requesting.
Sure. So Mr. McKenzie, have the waivers changed at all with, with the new plans?
They have, they have not as of yet. We just wanted to get this into you, so the board could see what we're proposing on the property. If, if this is, we have two options to do there. You can put this as a road and we plus a waiver of 500 dead end length road. Or a single access road, or this could actually be done as 16 freestanding condominiums and this could be a common driveway, which in this case would negate the need for that waiver.
Okay, and how about the other waivers?
Can you see the plan, Joe?
Yeah, we can see the plan. I don't know if there's any way to rotate it so you, so everyone can see the, the full plan itself.
If you have the PDF file, you can, if you right click, you can rotate it. The engineers didn't give me the one single copy on it.
Okay, so you're not able to do that right now?
You might be able to hit the minus at the top of your screen, which will minimize the size slightly.
Sure. And then rotating clock, that was clockwise or counterclockwise. I didn't quite catch that, but. Maybe if you do that, we can get a better look at it.
Ken, I apologize. I don't have my list of waivers with me. I had everything with me. If you understand that we're not likely, we'll have at least one more hearing and I'll have to have those with me at that time.
Okay.
So Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
All right, go ahead, Bob.
So Steve, what is the status of the engineering peer review?
We talked to Norrie. She asked us about providing a check and we told her the other day, I talked to Ed that wanted to go through this hearing, get. A little feedback and then present the check because if it wasn't going to be at all favorably. Received, he didn't want to issue a check for that size of money. Which in essence would be wasted.
All right.
A prerequisite for the, for the permit?
For the application?
Yeah, isn't that a prereq?
No, not that I'm aware of. Nope. In my conversation with Norrie. Norrie said that this is something that the board's been doing and you've done it in the last several. And gave me an idea of what it would cost and then we discussed, she asked me about getting a check. And gave me an idea of what it would cost, and then we discussed, she asked me about getting a check. And it would help if we got it before this hearing because that might speed some things up, but that it wasn't required to be here within with the application.
Yes, so that that is correct. We don't request the check at the time of filing. But once an application has been filed in order to have the peer engineer do the review, we do request a check for that. Because we cannot engage a peer engineer prior to having a contract and payment to support the peer engineers review.
So we're at that point now, Noreen?
So the review, the peer review cannot begin till they provide the check. It sounds like they have engaged a new engineer who's drawn up some new plans. So in order to have a peer engineer review those plans, they would need to provide a check to us.
So are you ready for us to continue with this without that peer review? Input?
Well, I think you have brand new plans essentially before you.
So I have a I I do have a question on that. I know that he sent plans to the board. But in all the other meetings that we have, my main concern right now is that we're discussing a plan that isn't being presented on screen during the meeting. We're seeing portions. We've got questions about waivers. We don't have information available, so I understand it's a tech, you know, technical issue. They had the same issues in the last meeting. But I don't think we should be discussing any plans if the plans can't be presented on screen because I think it's going to be an open meeting issue. So if 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 members had questions in general, or people wanted to speak, but at this point, we would have to continue this hearing just because we don't have a formal presentation of plans. And if they're stating that they don't want to give a peer review till that's presented, then that means we're going to have another hearing where hopefully they can present the plans correctly. And then after that meeting, then they would have to get stuff ready for the peer review. It's just it's just moving this down the road longer. And I just want to make it clear that this is a fact that it's it's just not being presented properly on what we need. And, you know, I understand they said that Mr. Colley wasn't available tonight, and he had a you know, conflict of interest, but you know, I know that we offered the towns, you know, technical IT before. And we have dealt with this with other projects before, and I just think it's it's very risky to go forward with what we're just seeing on the screen. They're discussing changes of plans that haven't been submitted. They're waiting for changes on other things. I don't know if we should discuss this anymore. Just continue and hope that they present it at the next meeting.
Thank you, Bob. And I I understand your concerns, Bob. I would like to get through board questions, and I I understand the issues with the with the issues trying to show the display.
I only bring it up, Mr. Chairman, because I I was privy watching a planning board meeting. And this was an issue that they brought up at that meeting. That what they were discussing and what they were individually seeing wasn't being able to be displayed on the screen. And at that point, they said they would have to be able to do that in order to meet open meeting. So that's the only reason I bring it up.
Okay. So we're sorry, Bob, were they not able to display?
So they weren't able at all? Yeah, they 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 were seeing portions and then and then stuff they couldn't display at all, or one of the questions came up because, you know, we do have people that attend these meetings virtually.
Right.
And what we're discussing, they can't see. And and anything that we discuss, if it's visual and they're, you know, showing us, you know, layout streets. Especially in a virtual format, it should something that's just it's automatically presented that way. You know, I know we'll have to.
I have some application questions if that helps.
Sure, and just a second, if I if you could rotate that map. I think if you if once you had it open and then you right click it, sorry, I'm not great at troubleshooting computer issues. But when you had it displayed and then with a right click, I think you're able to move it clockwise or counterclockwise, just moving it ninety degrees. That might show you the full map.
Can you see that now?
It's on my screen. It's still showing File Explorer.
One thing as far as the peer review check, that'll be delivered tomorrow morning, so that that can start with new plans.
All right. Scott, you said you might have some questions about the application itself.
And we saw the application last year, and so that shouldn't be a problem. Mr. McKenzie, how do you address the wildlife corridor? I know you're on your application. It says it is in a wildlife corridor. How how is that going to be addressed?
I haven't, I believe, we asked for a waiver of wildlife corridor, and it just doesn't seem to be my copy that I have with me.
All right. You show on your pro forma in the budget, three hundred thousand dollars for a marketing plan, but no marketing plan was provided in the in the app or in the file. How did you come up with that number for marketing? Hello?
I I'm here, Scott. I apologize. Yeah, I think we have that down as commissions. And not as a as a marketing of the of the units, but as a focus commissions.
If you if you go to page seven of eleven.
Yeah.
There's a line item towards the bottom that says marketing three hundred thousand dollars. And soft contingency, soft cost contingency, which I'm going to ask about in a second. That's three hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. I was just wondering how you got to that three hundred thousand.
The three hundred thousand was real estate commissions. And the soft car contingency is is generally five percent of all the other costs. This is the same with the high cost contingencies is generally five percent.
Yeah, but you have a soft cost, and then you have a soft cost contingency.
And the soft cost contingency is everything that's in the soft costs, starting with the permits and surveys, architectural engineering in total, and then five percent of that is the contingency.
Okay. And and in your initial write up, Mr. McKenzie, on the third page, second paragraph, you'd made a a reference to the three bedroom houses being in in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. Do you have a calculation of how many of those three bedroom houses are on a third of an acre?
I do not.
Okay. And is that are you aware of, or is that a construction company on on Percival Road operating on Percival Road right now?
I believe there is.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I think that takes me out. Thank you, Mr. McKenzie.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let's see, any other questions from the board? Do we?
Yeah, like to finish my questions. So so we don't have the waiver list, so it's difficult to know what what we want to query about. Is there a lighting plan?
There will be a lighting plan for the for the new road when it's private. We will have lighting going all the way down the the road. Whether it'll be solar or it'll be actually electrical from the private electric. I haven't decided on that yet.
It would be nice to see something.
Yeah.
Uh, landscaping, I I saw some sort of very vague cartoons of that, I think.
If you look at what the capes and ranches, it gives the explicit type of shrubs I'll be using for each of the ranches and capes. It's one of the, no, don't look at the the original subdivision one. You have one that has the ranch and the cape.
Yep, I know. I'm seeing I see that. I'm looking at it. Obviously, again, it would be nice to show the public. Is there landscaping along the roadway itself, or?
No, there'd be a buffer on on the other north side where the property of butts where Percival Road is the dirt road. I would leave a twenty foot buffer of natural trees there before the road would start coming into the into the subdivision.
And what about sidewalk?
I would add a sidewalk and also have a little school hut for the kids, too. And that would probably be going, if you look at where lot number one is, as the road makes the turn, it'd be approximately right in that area, so it's off the off the main area of the road.
I'm a I'm a little confused here. It's so Percival Road runs totally parallel to this?
That's correct.
And but you're proposing like a twenty foot separation, almost like a median strip?
Yep, and then and then the road would actually come onto the the existing property that's there now.
So Ken, sorry to interrupt, but Mr. Montero, we're looking at your desktop right now. Was there any way you can get back into that?
Yeah.
Adobe, because I think you had at least a decent maybe about half the project you were able to display.
Yeah, I'm on it now, which I'm on my files now.
Sure.
Back them up.
It's not on my screen at the moment.
It's just at your home icon screen.
There we go.
There you go.
Got it?
All right, yep. So we got lots six through. That's probably fourteen on the corner there.
Yeah.
All right, there's trotting park roads. We have lot one there. And just for frame of reference, I know you just said you were going to propose a little hut for for the school kids, if you could point where that might be.
Yes, if you look where you look at where lot number one is, you'll see how the house has turned. You follow where the solid line is where the town water is. So approximately where that buffer zone is, right in between lot number one and lot number two, I would build one right there.
All right. And just for the sake of showing it to everyone at home, is there any way that you can scroll kind of left to right just to show the whole the whole project?
Could I just ask, while you're still there, will you show it entering off of trotting park road with that entrances?
Yeah.
Is that are there two roads entrances are butting against each other, or?
That's that's actually part of my land. The the road that's that comes in is actually comes on my property. The if you look to the right hand side, left hand side on where lot number one is, is probably only about an eight foot strip that's actually what someone can drive on. So basically, the the entire road that when you come in off of Trotting Park Road is in on my property.
So is there any is there any kind of border separation needed?
The
When when there's kind of two entrances merged?
Couple of things that we planned on doing, because the majority of the road right there that's now will be cut in onto the property. So the people with coming from they're coming from Percival Road, coming on the trotting park road, they would actually merge on onto my road. And I'd actually have a separate entrance coming into the the five acres of land. So either a stop sign could be put there or something, but they're actually coming onto my property with that road.
So I guess just a legal question or opinion from Mr. McKenzie, how long have people been using that road on Mr. Montero's property? Has it been a time period now that they now have right to pass?
Well, since it's unregistered land and unregistered land, they would have to go and acquire those rights to, just hurry retire to a legal process. You don't get those rights just because you've been using them. You have to go to court and establish them.
All right, well, I'm not gonna.
It seems to me we may need to go visit that. We may need some kind of site visit to sort out the the road issue.
Right, and I I can't render any legal.
Like I'd like to walk. I could walk right up there with you and show you what the layout's going to be.
Sure, and I I can't render any legal opinions myself, Mr. McKenzie, but is is there anything with the any anything within the realm of engineering, the DPW engine engineering department about roadways and merging and how close they could be, anything like that? Anything that anything that's applicable to this situation?
Not that I'm aware of, but we'll contact them.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else for board questions? Ed, I haven't heard from you yet. You got anything?
I think we need to go out there and look at it. All right, group.
All right, James, anything? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, no questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, James. Mary, anything?
Nothing at this time.
All right. Okay.
Chairman, may I have one more quick one?
Go ahead.
Steve, with regards to the town's concern for one and two bedroom units, I I know what your argument is about three. What is your 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 opinion on one and two, and how do you answer the town's the town's concern about that's what they're looking for, but not being proposed?
The way we did that, Scott, was we have, as you know, we have to put a three bedroom septic system in for each of the houses anyway, on Title V. That's all you can do.
That doesn't mean you have to put a three bedroom house up, Steve. Bedroom septic system is is mass Title V code for any residence a three bedroom. But that doesn't mean if you wanted to build a one bedroom or two bedroom that you you'd still have to put a three bedroom septic system in, right?
Exactly.
That's nothing to do with my question, actually.
What we're saying is that if the board feels that some of the units should be two bedrooms, especially what we expected to be four among units, we were agreeable to that. But really, not not very agreeable to a one bedroom, because one bedroom houses are really not saleable. You have a letter from a local realtor in there who basically explains that, too. It's it's more stable for the development with three bedrooms. They can be two bedrooms with a den, two bedrooms or the home office, you know. People still have guests over, so you might have a two bedroom, and then the third one is a guest bedroom. We just thought that it was more in keeping with the character of the surrounding houses by making them free, but we were certainly amenable that if we needed to reduce a couple of them down to two bedrooms, that we would be able to do on that.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that consideration personally. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Scott.
Can I ask a clarification question?
Go ahead, Bob.
So so Steve, are you meaning only the affordable units you'd be willing to do as a two bedroom? Because under forty B, you would also have to include some of the market rates as the same bedroom code.
No, we understand that.
Okay.
So it could be it could be both.
All right, thank you.
All right. So in order to get on to public comment, Mr. Montero, you would or Steve, whoever's working the computer, you would have to exit out of screen share. Just so we can get back control and I can see what's going on here. Thank you for that. All right, so public comment, if there is any question, comment, or concerns out there regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon. And we will elevate you and get to you shortly. All right, we do have one person, and if there's anyone else out there, just go ahead and click the raised hand icon, and we'll get to you in a minute. There'll just be a queue of people waiting. All right, so first up, I think I saw Pat Harris. If she could be elevated, please. All right, Ms. Harris, you're currently muted, so you'll have to unmute yourself. And if you could, please give your address and whatever question, comment, or concern you may have.
Hi, good evening. My name is Pat Harris. I live at one eighty one Percival Road, directly across from the proposed development. I believe the attorney representing myself and two of my neighbors is also in the chat room and wanted to speak. It would perhaps be more logical if he spoke first. His name is Brian Wall. Do you see him in the chat room?
We do see him. All right, if we could get attorney wall. We do see him. All right. If we could get Attorney Wall elevated, please.
And the two other neighbors that I referenced are Bill and Marge Overholz and Dan Culturi.
Okay, so I'm just gonna try to keep everything as organized as possible. We're only gonna handle one person at a time. So Ms. Harris, I don't know if you had anything to contribute yourself, or if you were just gonna allow Attorney Wall present concerns that you may have had about the project.
Ideally, I would speak after Attorney Wall, if that's acceptable.
Sure. So we'll believe we'll allow that Attorney Wall, we're, I don't know what you were expecting in terms of a presentation, but if it was anything over two minutes, I'd want a vote of the board to allow you to.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think that my presentation might be three or four. I think it might be a minute or two more than two, but not really that much. And also, the clients that I am representing when Ms. Harris are on the line tonight, they each have also a brief statement to make, but we made very clear that there's not gonna be any repetition or duplication. And their statements are very brief.
Very good. And once again.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move five minutes for Brian Brian Wall.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ken. So the motion was made by Ken to allow Attorney Wall five minutes to speak on behalf of his clients, seconded by Scott. We'll do a roll call vote, Ed.
Thank you, Karen. I.
Ken.
And Forman, I.
Bob.
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott.
Excellent. Good.
And TJ Hurry, I. So Attorney Wall, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney and tonight I'm representing Daniel Culturi, Patricia Harris, and Mr. and Mrs. Overhertz, who are owners of properties on Percival Road, and they are direct abutters to the project site. My clients are opposed to the proposed project, and they have retained me to represent their interest in this matter. I submitted a lengthy letter that details the basis of opposition hill. And Mr. Dugan did read that letter into the record in the first hearing. I do not want to repeat all of that letter, obviously, but bearing in mind that the board has heard the letter, I'd like to emphasize a few points. Basically, there's three categories, Percival Road, the waivers, and local needs and concerns. When Mr. Dugan read the letter at the last hearing, our contention was that the developer did not have any legal rights to use Percival Road. And we heard tonight that the developer has apparently conceded that point and has moved the road on to their own property. However, having said that, the change in the plans raises new questions that we have. And these are somewhat preliminary questions, because the first comment I want to make is that when I received the plan from the zoning board's office, I actually didn't perceive any change in the road layout. The plan is rather confusing. It still contains the notations on the old plan about the 22 foot road wide widening easement. And so I would respectfully suggest that the board might ask the applicant to clean up the plan so that we can clearly see what is being proposed and what is no longer being proposed. Also, by moving the road on to their own property, it raises other questions about drainage and road profiles and whether or not the road is adequate or the traffic. For instance, the driveway, the road, the road at the very terminal end simply goes right into the driveway of lot 16. Also, the 20 foot buffer requirement that was mentioned by the applicant is not actually on the applicant's property, as far as I can tell. It seems to me from looking at the somewhat confusing plan, that the northern side of the road, the northern, the northern edge of the road appears to terminate right at the property line. And so that raises questions about how that 20 foot buffer is going to be provided and how exactly they're going to blend the edge of the road with the edge of the property line. So bearing all of that in mind, I'd also like to make this comment that part of the process, as far as 40B is concerned, is that the plans are circulated to the other boards for which this board is sitting in for, namely the planning board. And the planning board reviewed the old road plan, not the new road plan. And I would suggest that the board might want to refer it back to the planning board so that the planning board can comment on the new road, and this board can benefit from the expertise at the planning board as far as road design and safety concerns. A related question to the movement of the road is that the applicant said in the presentation that the proposed houses meet all dimensional requirements other than density. But the houses appear to be in the same exact location as the first plan that was presented. But the road has now moved about 11 or 12 feet towards the houses. So I would respectfully suggest to the board that you might want to require the applicant to put on some dimensions on the plan so that we can see how far the sideline that the houses from the sidelines, rear lines, front yard setbacks, things that this board usually sees when it's reviewing special permits and requests for variances. So the second point we want to make has to do with the list of waivers. Under chapter 40B, an applicant may obtain waivers from local regulatory requirements if necessary for the proposed project to proceed. The comprehensive permit regulations clearly require that the applicant list each waiver being requested so that the Board of Appeals can clearly understand and deliberate upon the relief that it is being requested to grant. And this regulations is 760 CMR 56.05 parentheses eight.
One minute warning, Attorney Wall.
Thank you. Our review of the application suggests that only three waivers were requested from lot area, lot width and frontage. We believe that 12 are required, and these are all listed in my letter. And earlier tonight, the applicant said that they had requested a waiver from the wildlife corridor, but we do not think that is the case. We think that is one of the waivers that must be requested. Lastly, we want to make a point about inconsistent with local needs and concerns. These concerns are what are codified in your zoning ordinance subdivisions and bylaws. The Board of Appeals is empowered to deny an application for comprehensive permit if it determines that the proposed project is inconsistent with local needs. My clients have contended, and it's all in my letter, that this project does not comply with multiple respects with regard to the Water Resource Protection District, the Coastal Pond Overlay District, and the Wildlife Corridor Regulations, the local comprehensive plan, and the Falmouth Housing Production Plan. Again, these are all addressed in more detail in my letter. But these are the main points that we wanted to make. Having said that, Mr. Chairman, I'm available for questions. And as we discussed earlier, my three clients are also on the Zoom conference and have very brief statements that they'd like to make to the board.
Thank you, Attorney Wall. Mr. Montero, you entered screen sharing again. If you could take that down. No worries. I just lose control. It gives a different presentation, so I really can't see who's presenting and who's participating in the meeting. Thank you. All right. Any questions for Attorney Wall from the board?
I have a question. Do we have his letter? I'm looking for his his letter in the in the electronic.
We do. It was sent out before the first meeting.
Yeah, it's gonna be way in front in the original packet section.
Okay.
It's dated, it's dated December 8.
Any other questions from the board for Attorney Wall? All right. Attorney Wall, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll remain on the line in case there are any questions.
Ms. Harris, I think you were indicating that you were gonna have some of your own comments tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. My comments were directly related to the original plan, which I thought was being repeated in the second plan as it relates to the existing Percival Road, the inadequacy of it for absorbing all this traffic. So I'll skip that. And there would be some repetition in terms of what Attorney Wall has said, but I was struck by one of the statements made by the applicant that they were going to be creating a hut for pick up the children at the beginning of their property as they come in and then turn down. That means to me that they anticipate buses coming in and turning around. And if this roadway, and I agree with Attorney Wall, I had a very hard time understanding what is being depicted. Myself and Attorney Wall, my neighbors all thought that they were continuing to represent that they intended to widen the existing Percival Road. But if you look at what they're showing there, and again, it's confusing because it says widening of 20 I'm using a magnifier because it's so small, 22 foot wide widening easement. I believe that's what they're indicating is going to be the new road. But they don't show any dimensions, and I don't see a scale on the plan, so it's hard to figure out and extrapolate how wide that road is that is being proposed in front of the lots. And and as Attorney Wall indicated, it, this road just ends at the last development lot. There's no turnaround. There's no cul-de-sac. It's seems to be in violation of what is typically required for a subdivision. I also wanted to just point out that the planning board Mass Housing and the Town Manager's Office slash Board of Selectmen all pointed out that the access on Percival Road was inadequate. I hope that we have plans that can be further scrutinized as to what they're proposing as to an alternative access road. And lastly, as Attorney Wall is pointing out, I can't tell where that 20 foot buffer is. And and in addition to that, the 20 foot buffer supposedly separating their parcel from the parties across the road. But that is in addition, it's hard to tell if they're talking about our property being the 20 foot buffer or their property, and that needs to also be clarified.
Understood. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And again, if there's anyone else out there, I do see one person. If anyone else out there has a question, comment or concern, go ahead and hit the raised hand icon. We will get to you in a minute. But just to kind of clear up the screen here, Ms. Harrison, Attorney Wall, I might be easier to drop you to both back into the attendees list and Attorney Wall. Board has any follow up questions for you? We can definitely get you reelevated at that time. All right. If we could please elevate Bill. So Bill only has a first name. But once he's elevated, if you could state your full name for the record along with your address and any question, comment or concern you may have. All right. So we have Bill on the screen. You'll have to unmute yourself.
Okay, I've unmuted. Can you hear me?
Hi, Bill. We can hear you. If you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Good evening, ZBA Board members. My name is Dr. William Overholz. I live at 193 Percival Road in East Falmouth. I have a master's in water chemistry and limnology from Ohio State and a PhD from the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife at Oregon State. I'm not trying to impress you with credentials, but I wanted to provide a baseline for my comments. I feel this project will result in major impacts on the town and our environment. As far as impacts of the actual construction and the carbon footprint that this project will will provide and maintain, assuming the applicant clear cuts five and a half acres of mature trees, uses conventional construction and installs standard fossil fuel HVAC. This project will produce thousands of tons of CO2 emissions initially and hundreds of tons every year into the future. Now, the reason I mention that is Falmouth is currently struggling with issues related to sea level rise, coastal resiliency and energy. And town meeting recently declared a climate emergency. That's a climate emergency. Falmouth also signed on to the Green Communities Act during the during January 2020. And this requires the town to apply stretch code energy efficiency measures to new construction. I also feel like it's necessary to actually document the wildlife resources in the area. They've been mentioned briefly tonight here and there. But the area along Percival Road currently supports a diverse assemblage of reptiles and amphibians, including snakes, frogs, turtles and salamanders. This includes eastern, the eastern box turtle, five species of snakes and several frog species, including gray tree frogs. The area has also has a full suite of small mammals and 25 plus species of birds, including screech owls. And then finally, it's used regularly by whitetail deer, wild turkeys and coyotes. In addition, in terms of impacts of this project and addressing Title V issues, the town of Falmouth has installed sewers around the densely developed Little Pond Estuary on Main Street and in Woods Hole. The next sewer, sewerin project is focused on Great Pond, as we all know. The Falmouth Water Quality Management Committee is currently managing and addressing nutrient loading for the areas south of 28. There are no plans by the committee or the town to sewer additional areas of town because it's less, and quote, less densely developed.
And Bill, we do limit public comment to two minutes per person. I do have you at about two minutes. So if you'd like to summarize.
I just have a little bit more and then, you know, I'm finished.
All right, very briefly, please.
Okay. So the proposed 40B is inconsistent with the goals of the committee and the town. Continuing to approve dense developments in this area will no doubt result in expenditure of tens or possibly hundreds of millions of dollars in the future to install sewers to protect Long Pond. It'll further negate efforts to manage nutrients that are polluting our bays, estuaries, freshwater ponds and 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 our water supply. I and neighbors are currently getting our getting water from wells. And there are no plans to mitigate if wells are contaminated. Finally, impacts on the town water supply. This dense 40B project is in the Long Pond Watershed Protection District with Title V septic systems and the soil types in this area. Nitrogen, phosphorus and other household inputs will flow directly into Long Pond. Town has recently finished a multimillion dollar water treatment plant on Long Pond. Steve Rafferty, former director of this facility, has testified on several occasions at ZPA meetings that these defense these dense developments are not compatible with the new treatment plant will likely pollute Long Pond. It's not clear the town has carefully planned for dense development. And there have been many episodes of and including recently cyanobacteria being found in the town. And it's and the water treatment plant is not designed to deal with high nutrient loading and toxic algal blooms. And finally, to finish, we need to take immediate action on climate issues and decisive steps to protect our water supply in Falmouth. This development will do nothing to address any of these important problems that I have documented for you tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments tonight.
Read so speedily.
No, no worries. Sorry. All right. Up next, if we could get looks like someone's cell phone, Moto G seven power, please, and we'll figure out who that is. All right. So we have you elevated. You'll just have to unmute yourself and definitely give us your full name and address for the record, since we're not sure who you are at the moment. And again, you are muted, so you'll have to unmute yourself.
Hello, I just found the unmute. My name is Dan Culturi. I am at 187 Percival Road, also across from the proposed project. And I've lived there since 2013. I prepared comments after our last meeting and before reviewing the the new proposed plan. So I am going to reserve the right. I'd like to reserve the right to make comments in the future. The gist of my comments in the past or prior was regarding Percival Road itself, which is on my property. And the prior plan had used Percival Road as its road access road. So my comments are not relevant if the Percival Road is not going to be used. I think I think that's all I'd like to say at this time. And thank you for your for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Coulteri. All right, up next, let's see if we could get Betty elevated, please. And once again, if there's anyone else out there, go ahead and click the raised hand icon and we'll get to you in a minute. Betty, looks like you're elevated. All you have to do is unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm Betty Hecox Lee. I'm at 125 Comanche Drive in Falmouth. And I joined this meeting because the decisions of this board are so impactful on climate change. And I want to follow up on Bill's question.
Did we lose Betty, or was that just my connection?
Can you still hear me?
We got you back. Yep.
Oh, sorry. So yeah, I want to help on some of the questions. How does something like the climate emergency declaration that Falmouth passed in 2020, how does that affect local needs and concerns? And I realize you may not be able to answer here, but that's something I'm trying to sort out.
Sure. If you and we can, you can certainly pose that question to Mr. McKenzie, and we can see if they have any comment on that. And if they can't address it tonight, they can definitely address it during the next meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to get I'm just going to make sure that if there's anyone else out there who has any question, comment, or concern, because we'll be wrapping up public comment for the night and moving on. So anyone else out there, hit the raised hand icon. All right, now seeing anyone else, Mr. McKenzie, if you care to address any of the public comment.
With respect to the the plan and Brian raised some some good points there, and the plan does need some revisions, and they will be done very shortly. It does need some cleanup, some of the drainage, the road profiles and those sort of things. And the setbacks for all the lots, and we'll have that on the plan. We'll be meeting with Mr. Colley tomorrow about making some some of those changes that needed to be done. I would prefer to wait till the next meeting to address the climate emergency declaration that we have to address that this evening.
Very good. I do have a follow-up question for site control as part of the original application. You submitted a purchase and sale agreement dated August 20th, 2019, and an extension that was dated June 19th, 2020, calling for a performance on November 30th, 2020. Have you executed another extension?
Yes, we did.
All right. And is that part of our file currently, or would would it have to be submitted?
No, it should be part of the file.
All right. And what's what's the current date for performance?
I believe it was, I think it's believe it's March 31st.
March 31st. Okay. Thank you. Any other follow-up questions from the board?
I'd just like to say that we need clear information. We need a clear road design, especially since there's an issue over, you know, possible land transgressions. And we need, as I mentioned at the beginning, a clear list of waivers, which again is something Mr. Attorney Wall brought up. We can't we can't grant you, you know, relief from anything if we don't know what it is that you're asking relief from. So you have to provide us with that information. And lastly, the the point that again Scott brought up, peer review, engineering peer review, that's part of, you know, our every single 40B we're doing henceforth. So we expect that.
Thank you, Ken. And I forget whose first idea it was. Maybe it was Ed's about a potential site visit. How's the board feel about that? I think that might be more appropriate down the road where we actually.
When the weather's better.
When the weather is better, things can be staked and when we can have definite plans of the project.
Has anything changed since the last time we went out on the first hearing as far as construction?
No, there's been no construction.
So there's no road, there's no the the new road layout that you're proposing hasn't been staked for for us to see, has it?
No, just the original lots, the lots where they were designated on the property.
All right. So so in order for us to go out there prior to that would be would be seamless.
Well, it's pretty heavily wooded. If we're staked out, you'd be zigzagging all through the woods, looking at trying to look at the stakes.
Oh, I zigzagged in the in the woods this weekend off of Brook Hill, so I don't have.
We have done that.
So just a just a comment on the plan. So the only plans we have in the file right now are a large three sheet, which is basically three separate sheets. If you put together, you can actually see the project. So we'll need a one-sheet rendering that shows the entire project. You should you should have on there. You should have notations of the neighboring structures for reference on the neighbor's property. And you should also show that if you're discussing any kind of a buffer zone, that that buffer zone is located on your own property and that buffer zone is not being depicted on neighboring sites. We've had that issue before. You're also going to need something from the fire department on a new plan because.
No, it it does show a T on on the road when you're looking down right around what lot number, I believe it's 14 and 15. There is a T for the turnaround for the fire trucks.
But regarding regarding Mr. Wall's comments, when he was discussing how we currently have a plan that's never been before the planning board for referral. We also currently have a plan that hasn't been before any of the other referrals that we have, fire department, conservation, etc. So if you're changing the plan, we do, we should be referring back out to the other departments because the new plan has been completely changed.
I was just looking at the last page of the plan, looking for that T there. It looks like the driveway just turning into that last lot there. Is there really a T proposed?
If you look at the look at between lot 14 and 15, you'll see the regulation size for a the T that goes in with the other two houses, 14 and 15.
Okay, so you have you have it between 14 and 15, but then there's lot 16 in the back there.
That is correct.
Okay.
So that is that is that would be the T for the fire trucks to turn around in.
All right.
And just also a reminder, we also need all the measurements on the plan that I'll also mention. We need to see sideline setbacks, front yards. All that information has to be designated on there.
Yeah.
Is there a hydrant?
There are two hydrants there. The water that's proposed comes in off of Trotting Park Road, goes on to the property to the end of where lot number 15 or 16 is. And then I have to connect on Harness Lane because the water has to loop. So you'll see between lots number 10 and 11, that's the water line going in where we have to connect. So the the town water will circulate. And there'll be two fire hydrants.
The first hydrant is between lots three and four.
Well, I agree with Robert. It would be far easier to sort of get the full picture if we had this all on one sheet.
I told the engineer that, too.
Well, the two-bedroom apartments, I mean, the two-bedroom houses that graciously agreed to be on these new.
I I didn't agree to anything. No, go ahead. I'm listening. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, it was just a question.
I repeat it again, please.
I said we discussed two-bedroom applications on this, and your lawyer said that you would be amenable to that. Will that be reflected on the new plans?
I would not put the which ones would be designated, but I would be open to that situation. I'm not going to give a definitive yes on that.
So is that a no?
Yes, you're a no before presenting these plans, though.
I'm sorry.
They would have to be representative of what you were proposing.
Yep. Well, I'd have I'd have all three bedrooms and and all of the all of the houses, the capes and the ranches.
Thank you.
And also for next time, if you could maybe check in with DPW or the the engineering division, what about those two roads diverging, I guess, off of?
Yeah, maybe I can explain that. If you look at the top of the lot line, which is below where the town water is that I'm bringing in. So from the edge of the property of the parcel on the north side, that's where the buffer would come down, a natural buffer of about 20 feet, where I'd leave all of those trees going all along the property to separate any of the houses that are butted. And also in the back of the land on the south side, I would leave the natural trees in the back there doing doing a buffer. So the idea isn't to just clear the whole lot. I'd like to leave as much natural of the trees up there as possible.
Oh, I I understand that, but my my main concern is coming off of Trotting Park where you essentially have the entrance to two roads, both Percival and and yours, whether whether that's actually permissible.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will meet with DPW and then see how it is confirmed.
Great. And if you could also keep us on the loop about the the title examiner. I know you said that it's a complicated title and there he's looking into it. All right.
So I. Well, I was just going to say if he's if there are some areas where he's proposing to preserve buffer, it would be helpful if when they stake it, they put like some limited work stakes to delineate those.
Absolutely. All right. Anything else from the board?
Yes, I have one question. I've got one question regarding to the letter that came in tonight. There was a mention in the letter of box turtles. Has there been any kind of a study on the site? Because we have dealt with two other 40Bs that did have box turtles and had to do some kind of remediation for them during construction.
We have not.
Haven't done any studies, but conservation was out there and and they have not seen it. When Mark was doing the preliminary walk of the land of the property, he never came back to even said everything was fine, whether it was ground old pools or anything else like that. So I mean, I see the property all the time, so I I don't I haven't seen any type of wildlife that they're talking about.
Okay. So if there's nothing else from the board or Bob, I think, did you have anything else?
Well, so we all know we're going to need to continue. So through the administrator, my concern is continued dates. If we have to be supplied with a new plan and that plan has to go out to different departments for referrals, and it has to be available for the public. Maybe we need to find out from the applicant, a reasonable date. They will have all the information we've asked for tonight so that we don't get another situation where we have a meeting and we don't have any of the information that we actually need. I'd also like where there was a mention again of in a letter regarding box turtles, and I'm not saying whether anything is there or not, and Mr. Montero did say that he hasn't seen them there. But maybe we could also refer that letter to conservation that they could touch base with who wrote that letter to see what their reasoning was based on the box turtles.
I think to answer Rob's question, Mr. Chairman, we should be ready by the end of March. Any additional information that the board's looking for?
Okay, and I'll just defer to Noreen with what dates we're actually meeting that far out on.
Into the administrator, where we are going to be looking at those later dates, are there any issues with needing an extension signed at all?
Hold on one half a sec.
Obviously, we'd be willing to grant any extensions that you need in order to meet the timelines.
Thank you.
And I guess my only other comment would be Mr. Harry brought up the the control of site. And I know that you said you do have an extension that goes out, and I thought it was to sometime late in March. So if we are looking towards meetings extending beyond that date, we will need a signed extension submitted to the file so that we know that throughout this process, you do have control of site.
Okay, so based on the board's current schedules, we would have booked for March 18. It sounds like that would be too soon. The other March date, you already have two 40Bs on that night, so the next available would be April 8.
So then I make a motion to continue to next hearing, which would be April 8.
Second.
Second. Motion to continue to April 8. That motion was made by Bob and seconded by Ken. Roll call vote. Ed?
Ed, Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
God.
Godzinski.
And TJ Hari, I. Mr. Where'd they go? Mr. McKenzie and Mr. Montero, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have application. It's a continuation, application 69-20 Brunel, 27 Homer Ave in North Falmouth. And was it Attorney Clower? Representative, if you could be elevated, please. Hey, Attorney Clower.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Harry. I got to tell you, I'm glad that went a little long. It's been I've been trying to figure out how to turn off my cat filter for the past hour. I actually thought about it the other day. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower, and attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicant Nancy Brunel. We are back here on a continuance tonight, seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling on the property. I'd like to begin by apologizing for making a late submission to the board today. We noted the error on the plan last night. The third floor space was labeled as unfinished. It was always the intent that that be finished space, a bonus and slash rec room and storage, too, for for the grandchildren. That was the only change to those plans. I had mentioned that at the last hearing. That said, I understand that this submission did come in today, which is very late for the board's hearing. But we thought it was important to correct that error, realizing that many of you might not have had a chance to review it in that time, certainly at a premium. The applicants would certainly understand if the board prefer a continuance. However, if that change doesn't alter the view of the project, we'd be glad to proceed, whichever, quite honestly, whichever way the board would prefer. So I just wanted to note that, apologize, and provide that as an option.
Appreciate that, Attorney Clower. And I should mention that the voting members on this project are myself, Ken Forman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Solinsky. Just to clarify, Attorney Clower, were you looking to pull the board, whether we were looking for
I mean, I.
Automatic continuance, or?
If anyone felt strongly, would certainly be willing to do a continuance. Otherwise, I'm happy to proceed.
All right, I'll leave it to the board members. Is anyone feeling strongly on this? Because if not, we'll.
I'm ready to.
We'll go right ahead.
Thank you very much. Well, as a as a recap of where we left off, we are here looking at 27 Homer Avenue, which is presently a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling, which is non. which is presently a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling, which is non-conforming to front yard setback being 13 and a half feet, where 25 is required, side yard setback being, uh, less than zero. It's actually encroaching onto the abutting parcel. Um, and lot coverage by structures being 23 and a half percent. Uh, the applicants have proposed to raise and rebuild the existing dwelling and to build a new four-bedroom home. This results in a slight increase in lot coverage by approximately 51 square feet. Uh, this will still be at 24.3% below the 25% that's allowed by special permit. The front yard setback is improved, uh, to 14.3% and the side yard setback is actually eliminated as a non-conformity. I believe, uh, as it's 10 and a half feet, we did revise our building plan and site plan to note that the landing outside of the basement is a four-by-four landing, which I don't believe counts towards setback nor just the retaining wall. Uh, that being said, we did call out both of those setbacks on the plans that were submitted last week. The number of bedrooms, uh, does increase, but the existing septic system is designed for four, as reflected in health referral. And we did confirm with the health department today that, uh, the revised plan showing that the attic, third floor space is finished, uh, does not constitute a bedroom and that, a copy of that correspondence was submitted to the file as well. Uh, this does require a special permit under 243C and 24069E. In this case, relative to 243C, there's, there's no new non-conformities created. Regarding the existing non-conformities, the front yard setbacks improved from 13 and a half to 14.3. The lot coverage, though, increasing, uh, will be within the allowed range and the non-conformity is effectively eliminated with the issuance of a special permit. And the side yard setback, as I mentioned, uh, I don't believe either the retaining wall or the landing count for setback purposes as they're not structures as defined. Uh, we're showing the setback to this. The structure is 10 and a half feet. We do note the setbacks to both that landing and retaining wall though. But my, my understanding is that is eliminated as a non-conformity based on that. As to 24069E, there's no impact of using business from public ways. The building will be larger, uh, but it, it's certainly in line with the neighborhood. There's no affected nitrogen on coastal payments as the system is designed for the number of bedrooms that are proposed. And as to size, we looked at the 29 nearest properties of those. This is among, uh, uh, 30% of the smallest houses. 19 of those 29 have larger footprints, 22 have larger gross floor areas. As I mentioned, since the last meeting, we did revise those plans to reflect the landing off the basement. We did also address a question that was posed regarding rights to use McGansett Avenue. Uh, I did submit, uh, a letter a few weeks ago saying that, uh, under Massachusetts law and under title practice, Brunels do have a right to use McGansett Avenue. That was detailed in that correspondence that was submitted, uh, February 3rd. The project that's proposed represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions. It won't create any new dimensional non-conformities. It eliminates two existing non-conformities will improve the non-conforming front yard setback. This meets the requirements of 243C, 24069E and 24216. I believe that we addressed all the questions that came up at the last hearing, and I believe that there's no adverse effects that would overbalance the benefits that I've discussed. I believe that the board can and should, uh, grant a special permit, but I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Clower. We will turn it to board questions. Bob, did you have anything?
Well, can you just confirm again? Cause it's been listed last week, the bedroom count?
Sure. The bedroom count's gonna be four.
And that's a reduction from, was, did you say it was a reduction?
No, it's, it, the existing count is three, but the, the, the system is designed for four and that's reflected in, uh, the health department referral that came over initially.
Uh, while we're on that, just one question on the health department referral that came from Mr. McGann, uh, that you sent over today. Um, he said if the staircase is open as it can be, as it can still be safe, then it's not gonna be accepted. Do you have an idea with that reference, if it can be safe is regarding?
I think as long as it's still meeting building code, what I, what I'd be happy to do is share my screen, um, again, because I, we actually have a 3D rendering of what the, uh, third floor space looks like. And.
Right ahead, if you want to share your screen.
Right here. So this is the third floor space. You'll see there's a railing that's open to the floor below, uh, but certainly designed in conformance of the building code. And I think that's what you'd be referring to.
And my only other question is when you submitted the information on the easement, um, I know she didn't actually submit any, you know, data documentation, but, uh, on an easement like that, can that also be used by construction vehicles for an owner or is that limited to owner's use only?
No, it's not. It's not an easement, actually. It's actually a right of way. When you have, when you have a property abutting away like that, um, they, they own to the center line, but they have the rights to use that way, uh, and that would be for anyone using their property. It's not, it's not an easement to, to, to the owner.
So it's a right, so it's a right to re-pass over. You wouldn't actually be able to park on it.
Sure. And I think that's true of any, of any way.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Ed, anything?
No, no question. They take, answered all my question.
Very good. Ken? Nope. Okay. Mary?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Scott?
Yeah, just piggybacking off of Bob's question about the access, um, you have no concerns at all that the H20 traffic that's going to be there in close proximity to the septic system with cement trucks, uh, construction vehicles loaded with stone, et cetera. You have no.
I, I don't. We do have Tim Santos, uh, with us tonight. If you'd like to ask anything specifically of Tim.
Just if you, if you're fine with it and you want to testify that there's, you have no issues with it, then, and get that on the record, I'm fine with it.
Uh, we've discussed it internally. We don't believe it's going to be a problem between the access from, from the front of the building and also from the rear.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chen.
Thank you, Scott. James, anything?
Uh, no, no questions. It is, uh, I'll agree with Mr. Clower's assessment. It's, uh, it's keeping to the neighborhood. That neighborhood's very different than the McGansett I grew up in, but I think it's a very nice plan. I have no opposition. Not voting either, so.
Sorry. Always value everyone's input here. Uh, and my concerns were already addressed through testimony, so we will turn it to, uh, public comment. If there's any question, comment or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon and we will elevate you in a minute. All right.
So I, I.
Not seeing anything, but Bob, go ahead.
I, I've got a quick, uh, question just for the administrator, just for clarification. So, um, engineering is one of their, uh, conditions that they're recommending is the sediment erosion control standards, and that has to be on the public way. Do we have anything that we can use similar to that on the, that private section so that if there is heavy traffic, there isn't issues with those other properties using that easement?
So typically those, um, erosion and sediment control standards do include runoff from the property in general. So while they don't have control onto a private way, they would ensure that there was not runoff actually from the property that would be part of engineering's review. So when they require those, um, stormwater and erosion and sediment control conditions be included, uh, that would presumably take care of that as well.
And, and Mr. Clower, were the, um, do, 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 were the demarcated limit of works, uh, shown on the plan?
I don't believe our plan reflects a demarcated limit of work, although would of course be happy to submit that, uh, as, you know, that could certainly be conditioned and we could, would be happy to submit that.
All right. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Attorney Clower, one more question real quick. Responsible for the cleanup of that shared access in the back with, after the construction vehicles? Who takes care of that? The, you guys, right?
I, I would certainly think so.
Would there have to be some kind of written agreement with your butter or how does that work?
No, it's, it's simply a right of way. It's a private road like any other road, um, and, and, you know, they have a right to use it. Um, but I think, uh, they've had this property for quite a while. They have good relationships with their neighbors. They want to continue those good relationships and part of that would be cleaning up after themselves.
So it's, so it's a common, it's a common, a, a common drive, but who's responsible for its upkeep? And it's snow plowing and all of that.
So it's, it's interesting that you ask, um, the, there is no, there's no written agreement to that. There's, there's actually like a colonial statute back from like the, uh, 1790s or so that allows for owners along a private road to create a, a road association. That has not happened here. I only know of one situation where it's happened in all of Falmouth. Uh, but it's, it's just a common effort.
Yeah. And the only reason I ask is because in that low-lying area with a high groundwater issue, you lose a truck in that road. It gets soft, it gets muddy, you lose a truck in there. You've got, you've got issues and it has to be restored. So I was just curious, who is responsible? Who is going to take the liability if, uh, how, how that was shared, how the liability is shared?
I think, I think that would certainly be if, if the applicants in their, their construction process caused an issue, they would of course deal with it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chen. That's all I have.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Any other follow-up questions from the board? All right. If we've heard everything that we need to hear about the project, is there a motion? Not everyone at once.
I'll move to close.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion to close made by Ken and seconded by Scott. Roll call vote. Ed.
Ed, Dan, you're an I.
Thank you, Ed. Ken?
Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelensky, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So the hearing is closed. No more testimony is taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Brief discussion?
Sure. Why don't you start us off, Scott?
Yeah, I'm sa, I'm satisfied with, with my concerns from the last hearing. I think that, um, the access in the back has been identified accurately or, or at least substantially. And, and, and like Jim said, that, that's a, that's a, that whole neighborhood is, is challenging for parking and summer and everything else. But it seems that everybody there knows how to navigate it. Uh, with that construction access in the back, I would be in, in favor. Absolutely.
Very good. And I would be in favor of the project as well, uh, pretty much for all the reasons you stated, Scott.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, I'd be in favor. We just have to have the right findings and conditions for the permit.
Of course. Anyone else for discussion? All right. Yeah. Would there be another motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions.
Very good.
Second.
All right. Motion to approve with conditions made by Scott and seconded by Ed. Findings. Anyone want to start us off with findings?
Yeah, actually I'll start off the basics. So 240-3C, 240-69E, 240-216. It's currently a one-story dwelling, uh, being renovated to a two-and-a-half story dwelling with four bedrooms. Footprint is changing from 1510 to 1561. Uh, there's a, uh, non-conformity currently to lot coverage, uh, 23.5% where 20 is allowed. Uh, 13.5 from Homer Ave, uh, is going to increase to 14.3. So they're increasing that setback. And then they're improving the side yard setback, which currently encroaches less than, less than one foot. They're increasing that to 10 and a half.
Certainly in keeping with the neighborhood, Bob.
Keeping in the neighborhood, um, there is, uh, referrals in the fire from, uh, in the file from, um, from health department regarding the attic that as long as it's unfinished space, uh, and as long as that stairway remains open, it can't be considered a bedroom. So he's still looking at the property as four.
More detrimental.
Uh, property is located in the McGansett Harbor Coastal Pond overlay. Uh, information was submitted regarding access, uh, uh, to the private area behind the home, which is an easement to pass and repass. Uh, testimony was that there would be no parking in that area.
Applicants stated that if the septic tank had to be rotated to achieve, uh, uh, sufficient distance from the foundation, that would be done at time of excavation. Is that right? Now, I'm, I'm asking, i- isn't, isn't that what they said? Okay.
Yes.
So that would be a finding because if, in, in that event, we wouldn't want to create, we wouldn't want to create, uh, a non-conformity, but it was stated through testimony. So it should be in the findings, right?
Yeah. And on the finding on the overlay district, just to make a notation, the conservation staff, um, had no comment because the project is outside their jurisdiction.
Applicant stated that, that, the, the, uh, the, uh, shared access would be restored to its original condition at the end of, uh, uh, construction?
Yeah. An applicant stated that the current project plans do not include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls as described in the control standards, and they will be adding that to the plan.
All right. Anything else for, uh, findings?
No opposition to the project at the time of hearing or filed in the, uh, with the zoning administrator?
That's a good one. Thank you, James. Anything else for findings?
I just that a, um, a detailed plan was shown for drywells for the proposed roof line.
All right. Moving on to conditions, if we're all set with findings.
Per plan?
Yep. Uh, per revised plan, it's going to include that demarcated limit area and erosion controls. They'll need to limit the property to the four bedroom that they have now. The attic space, uh, stairway, uh, cannot be enclosed. And there can be no additional sleeping area in the walkout basement. Uh, they'll need to, uh, let's see, we'll do section 99, one of fixing of legible numbers and time limit for compliance.
Hours in time of construction?
And Norine, what do we usually use? Isn't it seven to?
So some of your other projects you've done seven to seven, Monday through Saturday, some you've done seven to seven, Monday through Friday and Saturday only till four, like an eight to four. So it's up to you.
It's very congested. So I'd rather go with the lesser time.
All right. So you want to limit Saturday to eight to four?
Yeah.
All right.
I'd suggest we include a request for as-built. Pretty tight in terms of the height and the side yard.
Uh, prod, project must include soil erosion and sediment control standards. The Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with zoning board of appeals. And then we need to add the clause in regarding the drywells. The drywells need to be inspected prior to, while they're open, prior to closing them in. Project was not direct any stormwater runoff to any public property, butters of public rights away. Uh, and then did we put, um, uh, there should be no parking of vehicles in that easement area?
You're gonna have to park in the easement. Sometimes you have to leave farm trucks overnight. Sometimes you have to leave other equipment in order to affect the excavation. It's off the main drag.
Well, I'd usually say that, but in this case, we've got testimony from the applicant that the easement is only allowed for passing and repassing and can't, can't be used for any parking.
But Bob, you gotta be a little lenient with that when, when we've directed them to use that as part of a condition out back. There are certain aspects of the construction that equipment has to be left there and you gotta park it somewhere.
So then I would just, so I would say that you'd have to put in the findings then that on that applicant's testimony, even though he said that it's for passing and repassing, the board is not going to condition that for parking.
That's fine, cause it doesn't go all the way through to the main, to the other road.
No, I guess my, I guess my only concern was.
It just goes to the backyards of two, two properties off of McGansett. Anything to keep them from parking on the upper road, I'm for.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm for it. I don't have an issue. It's just that when they made an assumption that directly told the board, you can't park there. And then the board is saying, well, we're going to allow you to park there.
Well, can we, can we limit that to the time of construction?
Well, I don't think you can park there at all. They can use it only as a pass and repass. They can do whatever you want on the Homer. It's just that, it's just that back section and I, I wouldn't have done that, but he, he put in the testimony, you can't park there.
Okay.
Anything else for conditions?
Does the administrator know of anything that we did not include?
I can't think of anything right now.
All right. Last call for either findings or conditions. All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Scott and seconded by, I think, Ed.
No, reverse. Did I make I didn't make the motion to approve. I said, didn't I?
I could have sworn you made it.
All right, if I, yeah, if if that's, I'll stand by it.
Any anyone want to back me up on that?
And then it was a it was a fight between Ken and Ed for a second.
Yeah, 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 yeah. All right, I'll I'll own that.
All right. I I always scribble it down, but all right. So anyway, uh motion to approve with conditions definitely made by Scott and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote. Ed?
Ed, Dan, you're and I.
Ken?
And Forman, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelensky, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So the pa- passes unanimously with conditions. Attorney Clower, thank you for your time.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
All right.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to um request a five minute.
All right, well, uh, yeah, we'll do a five minute break then. See everyone back here soon.
All right.
No apologies necessary, Ken. All right, so it looks like we're all back and we can get back underway. If CCTV could get rolling again. All right, we are back with our new public hearings, starting off with application seventy seven dash twenty Hansbauer Three Handy Lane in Falmouth.
So we're we're having a shift of positions here. Um Mr. Dugan is recusing from this hearing.
Yeah, I'm going to be recusing for both of the Handy Lane properties because I've got a um a property transaction in close proximity.
So I am assuming the role of clerk. I will not be able to do it as well as Bob, but I will make best efforts. That being said.
Thank you, Norrie.
Public notice is hereby given that Michael and Lisa Hansbauer of Norfolk, Mass. have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty three C of the Code of Falmouth to remove the existing garage and breezeway and construct in addition with an attached garage on the subject property, Three Handy Lane in Falmouth, Mass. And for referrals, we have an email from Scott McGann of the Board of Health. He states that the applicant is seeking to have four bedrooms, and they intend to install a four-bedroom septic system. They will require an application to the Board of Health for that system. The last system was installed in two thousand four and is for a three-bedroom. Scott Schluter from engineering um notes that there were going to be some revision plans. Uh their comments at the time was that the application was reviewed for impacts to the public right of ways and public utilities. States that Handy Lane is a public right of way in this area. Said the applicant has an approved driveway permit on file in the office. A bond has not yet been submitted for that. Uh they expect that they're waiting for the hire of a contractor to post that bond, and he states that they will not sign off on a building permit until the bond has been posted. States any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property of butters or public right of ways. Roof drains connected to a drywell are proposed for the addition. Uh the engineer recommends that the board include a condition that requires the additions roof discharges to the drywall. Said the project includes an acceptable erosion control plan. Uh he requests the following condition be included in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the plan of erosion control sheet three of three and the town's soil and and erosion and sediment control standards condition document, which can be found on the engineering division's page on the town website. He states where this project is subject to a driveway permit from engineering, they can inspect the erosion and sediment controls. See. Conservation staff have no comments on the above referenced plan, which is for Three Handy as it falls outside their jurisdiction. No comments from the planning board. Uh Peter McConerty notes that the current water service is a three-quarter inch service, and then it's recommended that the service line be upgraded to a one-inch service. And no comments from assessing, and that is it.
Fine job, Norrie. All right, and I'd have to appoint an alternate. Mary, would you be willing to vote on this project?
Sure.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right, and that remain uh the remaining voting members are also voting as well, and Attorney Clower, go right ahead.
Uh good evening again, Mr. Hari. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, Michael and Lisa Hansbauer, the owners of Three Handy Lane. I'm joined tonight by Tim Santos of Holmes McGrath Engineering and also Greg Serunian of ResCom Architecture. If you if they want, if you want to elevate them now, that's fine. Otherwise, we can wait till there's any questions that they might need to address.
Uh let's get them elevated just in case. Thank you.
Okay. Uh we're seeking permission tonight to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling at Three Handy Lane. Uh we're going to spend a little bit of time in this little corner of Falmouth tonight, so I think it's worth uh orienting ourselves. Uh Handy Lane is located on the southern side of Queen Street in Belveter Plains. This particular lot is uh ten thousand square feet, and it's located in the RC zoning district. Presently, there's a two-bedroom, single-family dwelling with an attached garage, footprint of uh fifteen hundred and eighty square feet, which is a lot covered by structure fifteen point eight percent, well below the twenty percent that's allowed by right. It is non-conforming. Uh the structure is that uh to the front yard setback being twenty-two point four feet where twenty-five is required. Otherwise, this project, this property is conforming to setback and lot coverage requirements. The applicants are seeking to improve the usefulness of this property. They want to renovate and expand uh the current area of the garage. Uh the existing garage is going to be uh effectively demolished, but there's going to be additional living space added at the rear of that area, and also on the second story, there'll be two bedrooms added. Uh this proposal results in a garage and effectively the same area. Adding a bedroom on both the ground floor and on the second floor. Uh there's no effect on the non-conforming setback. The proposed addition will not create any new dimensional non-conformities, and the resulting lot coverage by structure is allowable by right at twenty percent. Uh they have also proposed a new four-bedroom septic to accommodate this. They're applying for a special permit under two forty section three C, which allows that pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that what's being proposed is not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. It goes on to state that the board should consider the standard of two forty two sixteen, and whether or not the alteration creates a new dimensional non-conformity, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average conditions in the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new non-conformity created. Uh the existing non-conforming front yard setback is unaffected and otherwise conforms to setback and lot coverage requirements. There's no impact to views and vistas, and it's certainly in line with the other houses in the neighborhood. This project represents a significant improvement in the usefulness of the property for the applicants. It meets the requirements of two forty-three C and two forty-two sixteen, and there's no adverse effects to this proposal. I believe this board can and should grant a special permit for this project, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have along with the uh design team.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower. We'll turn it to board questions. Uh Ed, got anything?
I have no comment.
All right, Mary?
I have no comment, no questions.
Okay, James?
No questions, thank you.
Very good. Ken?
Good.
Scott?
Uh is Tim elevated?
Uh don't see. Oh, there we go. If we could, he just raised his hand. If we could get him up, please.
Yeah, just too quick, just easy ones.
Amy's last words.
No, no, well, I can go the other way with it.
No, no, no.
Oh, I I just checking. Hey, Tim.
How are you? I'm here now. Thank you.
The proposed additions obviously live in space, right?
Correct.
All right, so we're ten foots, we we got a ten-foot setback uh from the 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 new septic field that's being proposed. And it's that slash line, is that a liner already proposed?
It it's on a slab that's a garage.
All right, so so I was looking at the slash line on the the house side of the septic field. What does that slash line represent?
Oh, that that's an old uh that that's a light dashed line. That's an old patio.
Okay, good. And the other thing is in the driveway is that square box that uh uh refers to proposed drainage. Is that just a gutter inlet?
It's just a gutter inlet that'll collect the driveway and go over to the driveway.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott.
And that wasn't bad.
No, that was great.
Thank you.
Any follow up questions from the board? All right, seeing none. Uh public comment, if there's any question, comments or concerns regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon using the Zoom software, and we will get to you shortly. Looks like we do have one. If we could elevate Bill Goodwin, please. And Mr. Goodwin, once you're elevated, which you are, you'll have to unmute yourself, and if you could provide us your address and whatever question, comment, or concern you may have. Looks like you're unmuted, so we should be able to hear you if you are talking.
Okay, I'm uh Bill Goodwin of Six Handy Lane, and I'm in full support of the project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Goodwin.
Oh, I have. Thank you.
All right, anyone else out there have a question, comment, or concern regarding this project? Hit the raised hand icon, and we will get to you shortly. All right, not seeing anyone else. Back to the board, any other follow up questions? Attorney Clower, just wanted to confirm that uh the driveway permit was approved, and you they'll be needing the bond?
That's my understanding, yeah. I I believe that, well, it's the engineering department has said it's going to be a condition of them signing off on on the building permit, so I don't think we have much of a choice in that matter.
Right. Okay. Any follow ups from the board? Seeing none. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to close.
All right, motion to close by Scott and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Ed?
Ed, Dan, you're and I.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Ken?
And Forman, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelensky, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So the hearing uh is closed, passes unanimously. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions?
Okay, motion approved with conditions made by Scott and seconded by Ed. Findings? Two forty-three C, uh the front yard setback is twenty-two four where twenty-five is permitted. It's going to remain unchanged, and I believe that is the only non-conformity before the board.
Yeah, upgrade in septic.
Upgrading in septic to four beds, uh two forty-two sixteen.
Upgrade in uh roof drainage.
Roof drainage. They're recommending a water service upgrade to one inch. Uh driveway permit has been approved, waiting for the bond payment prior to the uh building permit being issued.
Existing cesspool to be pumped and removed.
Sure.
As per plan.
Uh enhance enhances the utilization of the property with additional living space being proposed on the first floor and two beds on the second. Uh it's outside of Concom jurisdiction. Planning board had no comment, but I think we note that elsewhere in the project.
In keeping with the neighborhood, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely is. Anything else for findings?
Don't see any.
Uh engineering recommended no stormwater dr- uh drainage with uh with drywells proposed, and they were also recommending the engineering recommending the erosion controls.
Yeah, uh there's adequate, there's adequate uh drainage on that site now. Uh downspout drainage.
All right, so conditions uh per plans.
Yep.
No more than four beds.
Right.
Uh engineering knows conditioning, no stormwater off the property, and engineering also recommending their normal erosion condition controls.
Yeah, I was a construction, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. What do you think there should be, Scott?
The same as the last one.
All right, so that was Monday through Fridays, seven to seven, and Saturdays, seven to four, I think. Norrie, did I get, did I get eight? Eight to four?
But people sleep in after Friday night.
Yeah, I think um the only thing else that I would add there is that the four-bedroom septic uh requires an application to Board of Health. Uh they did, I guess, oversee a perk test, but they do need the actual application. Um obviously, without their sign off, they wouldn't be able to proceed with the building department.
We can do that by condition, right?
Yeah.
Well, we'll also need it as a finding.
Approval by the Board of Health.
Right, have it as a finding, but then ultimate approval under the conditions.
And then are you going to condition the upgrade to the one-inch water service?
Yeah.
And soil and erosion. Roof drains connected to the drywells, no stuff better.
Tim, nice plan.
All right.
Yeah.
Any anything else for either findings or conditions?
I'm good.
All right, so very good. So that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Scott and seconded by Ed. We'll do a roll call vote. Ed?
Ed, Dan, you're and I.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Thank you, Mary. Ken?
And Forman, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelensky, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So the pass uh the project passes unanimously with conditions. Attorney Clower, thank you to you and your team.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time tonight. Thank you. Have a great weekend.
You too. All right, up next, we have application seventy-nine dash twenty Norton Trustee, eighty-seven Child's River Road in East Falmouth. Ready to start us off, Bob?
Yes, so application number seventy-nine dash twenty, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws. You're hereby notified. You're hereby notified that Claire F. Norton trustee of Hingham, Mass is applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty-three C of the Code of Falmouth to rebuild the preexisting nonconforming single family dwelling on subject property known as eighty-seven Child's River Road, East Falmouth, Mass. For referrals, there is a note regarding Concom. As of today at two forty-six, our apologies, the project did go through Concom. And an OOC was voted for approval last night. Our last planned revision was one twenty-seven twenty-one. So we don't have the actual Concom approval yet. From Health Department, the project doesn't appear to be an increase in bedrooms remaining at four. The applicant shows a new septic tank being installed to make the ten foot setback from the proposed increase in foundation size. The applicant has not applied for disposal works permit to install the tank. Otherwise, no issues with the project, providing the proposed foundation meets title five setbacks to both the leaching and the proposed tank. From engineering, application was reviewed to impacts of public rights of way and public utilities. Charles River Road is a private right of way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights of way. Where the project falls within resource area buffers, we defer all stormwater management and erosion and sediment control issues to the Conservation Commission. We recommend the following condition be added, that per section ninety-nine dash one, a fixing of legible numbers required in time limit for performance. Because we don't have a conservation decision in the file, we probably will need that to refer to what the sediment erosion controls are. From the Water Department, the water service needs to be shown on the plans from the main to the home. There is an existing eight inch main that feeds the service currently. The service may need to be renewed from the curb stop to the home based on the existing conditions on site slash fire damage. From the Assessors Department, this includes lot one twenty and one twenty-one. Planning Board, no comment. Fire Department has no issues with the project as drawn. And there's no, no letters in support organs.
All right, thank you, Bob. And I guess we have Attorney Clower once again, and the voting members on this project will be the regular voting members.
Thank you again, Mr. Hari. For the record, I'm Kevin Clower, an attorney here in Falmouth. And I'm here at this moment representing Claire and Frank Norton. They're the owners of eighty-seven Child's River Road. And I'm also joined tonight by Denise Benoli, the architect on this project. The applicants are seeking permission to alter the existing nonconforming dwelling at eighty-seven Child's River Road. This property is on a lot of seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety-five square feet in the RC zoning district. This is a bit of a unique application because the property was destroyed in a pretty substantial fire last summer. I'm not sure if you've all had a chance to get out there, but I'm going to share my screen momentarily, just to to give you an idea. There was a pretty, pretty dramatic fire that took place there and it rendered the house basically a complete loss. And what they're trying to do now is to rebuild it in substantially the existing footprint. But to make some improvements and alterations along the way, because if not now, then when certainly. It is a four bedroom, single family dwelling. Footprint is two thousand sixty-eight square feet, which is a lot of coverage of eleven point eight percent by structure. It's nonconforming only to the setback to the three foot contours of tidal waters of Vineyard Sound. It's thirty-nine feet where fifty is required. Otherwise, it's conforming to lot coverage setback, lockage requirements and setback requirements. They are, as I said, seeking to restore the property, but to reconfigure it in a way that works better for their family. The only change to the footprint is an addition on the eastern side of the structure towards the street, which will not affect the existing nonconforming setback and will not create a new existing nonconformities. The resulting lot coverage by structure does increase slightly. It's going to be eighteen point two percent, but it's still well below that twenty percent that's allowed by right. The project has changed slightly since its initial application. We submitted revised plans last week following Conservation Commission where they removed a small addition on on the southern side of the property. The the remaining addition towards the street side will remain, and that's reflected in those plans that were submitted last week. This does require a special permit under two forty-three C. Again, two forty-three C states that preexisting nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit if they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists unless a number of standards that I think the board is familiar with. In this case, there's no new nonconforming conformity created. The existing nonconforming setback is unaffected. The the addition in question is on the southeastern side of the dwelling away from the nonconforming setback. And the property will otherwise conform to setback and lot coverage requirements. There's no impact to use in vistas. The property will remain in line with what it was and and the other houses in the neighborhood as well. This is, as I said, a unique circumstance. The the existing property is destroyed and unusable. To say that what what's being posed would be an improvement over the existing conditions would be a wild understatement. They want to restore the property, but in doing so, they want to improve it both aesthetically and from a usualness standpoint. And I actually think it's worth mentioning that, but for the addition on the front, this could be rebuilt without a special permit. That's one of the exceptions to two forty-three C. Prop premises that have been destroyed by fire can be rebuilt without a special permit, even if nonconforming. But they want to make it better for them and for their family. This meets the standards of two forty-three C and two forty-two sixteen. There's really no adverse effects, and certainly none that would overbalance the benefits to allowing them to restore the property. For these reasons and given these considerations, I would ask that the board grant the special permit. And I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have at this time.
All right, thank you, Attorney Flower. Turn it to board questions. Ed, do you have anything?
I don't have anything. It looks pretty straightforward. Fix it up and get it going.
Very good. Mary?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mary. James?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, Ken?
Not yet.
Not yet. Scott?
Attorney Clower, are they going to use any element of the existing foundation and then just do additions off of that with new formwork?
Yes, they are. For more specific questions, I'll defer to Denise Benoli. But they are, they are utilizing some of the existing foundation.
And and most of that, most of the fire was up high in that house, so it wouldn't have affected the 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 integrity of the concrete foundation, right?
No, they've had it inspected by by more than one structural engineer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Bob, anything?
Yeah, no questions.
All right. Was this one of those houses that was struck by lightning last year?
It was not. That one was over on, I think, Tashmo.
Okay.
And and this was a different occurrence.
Okay.
But it was close to the same timeframe.
That's what I thought I was remembering. Also, the the original application, I'm sorry, not the original application, but the original special permit from two thousand and three. It lists the property as eighty-seven Gene Path, so I don't know.
That runs to the north of this property. I think the the actual address that would be used is is the Charles River Road address.
Okay. All right.
So I I did have one just brief question. The conservation referral mentioned that you did get an approval, and it says that their last planned revision was one twenty-seven twenty-two-one. Most of the ones I'm seeing stamped here are five-four, so which was it a sheet that you changed in the plans that we have?
We we did submit the one twenty-seven plan. I I have it here on my screen if you'd like to see it. The only change is the the removal of the addition on the settlement, but that was submitted to the the board last week.
Yeah, I found the revision date. Ashley helped though. That's that's the only question I have.
Thank you, Bob. Ken, were you?
Yeah.
Did you find a question?
You're you're not in any flood zones?
They they are in a flood zone, but they're compliant with the flood zone standards.
Okay, so they're at the appropriate elevation.
Yeah, the the basement is a walkout basement in the rear. The first floor of habitable space, being the first living floor, is at elevation sixteen. It's an AE thirteen. So they're they're okay there.
Okay. And in terms of the additions in the brings the house a little closer to Charles River Road, but you're still have plenty of setback.
Yes, exactly.
Is it, just for the record? What is it?
I'm looking at that right now, so bear with me.
Does it say forty-nine two?
Forty-three, forty, forty feet, three inches.
Small.
So is there a particular reason why you don't want to move it further back?
They can't go, they can't move further back because of the nonconforming setback to the water.
Well, if they moved it further back towards the road, away from the, when I say back, I mean away from the
So, because they are utilizing much of the existing foundation.
Okay.
It's not a complete raise and rebuild, because they are going to be using some of that foundation.
Okay. And yeah, and then the location. What, location of the, probably the septic is another issue, maybe? Okay, thanks.
All right, any follow up questions from the board, Bob?
It is, yeah, one question. So is the basement walkout?
Yes, it is.
So on their elevation certificate, is the is the basement grade above the flood plain?
The basement grade is not, but there are flood vents in the rear, and it's not habitable space.
Thank you.
All right, we will turn it to public comment. If there's any question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon in the Zoom app, and we will get to you shortly. All right, last call. If anyone's out there, go ahead and click the raised hand icon for a public comment. All right, not seeing anyone out there for that. Back to the board. How would the board, or any follow up questions? Seeing none, how would the board like to proceed?
Well, can I, let me just ask the administrator a question. It's only because we don't have the conservation decision because it was filed last night. Because we have to include that in this, do we need that in advance prior to a vote?
I think you could probably just do it subject to their approval and to their conditions.
Mr. Cloud, do you know if in there, because you've seen it, or you've at the meetings, did they include soil erosion and sediment control standards?
In in full disclosure, I wasn't at at the hearing. Mike Borselli, the engineer, was handling it. I can tell you, having reviewed a lot of orders of conditions, they do typically include that as a requirement. We, if I could ask, if there's any way the board would consider approving it subject to that decision, I know the applicant would really approve it. We are looking at some timeframes from from an insurance standpoint that we'd like to try to to meet. So anything we can do to expedite would be would be appreciated.
All right, any other follow up questions from the board? Okay, is there a motion?
I'm I'm willing to make a positive motion with conditions.
Don't we have to close?
Oh, yeah, let's start with closing. Sorry.
I'll second it.
Thanks, thanks, Scott.
Motion closed by Ken, seconded by Scott. Roll call vote, Ed?
Ed, Dan, you're an I.
Everyone's different spots. Ken?
And Forman, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So passes unanimously. The hearing is closed. What would be the board's pleasure?
So motion to approve with conditions?
I'll second it.
All right, motion approved with conditions made by Bob, seconded by Scott. Findings?
We'll probably first say that the the house is doing rebuild due to a fire. Two forty-three C, two forty-two sixteen, more substantially detrimental. I just want to put one notation in that's actually improved, but the previous ZBA decision fifteen dash oh-three noted that the property was thirty-eight feet from the three foot contour. The current plan that we have shows that it's actually forty feet from the three foot contour. They're only doing a slight modification from the original permit. I'm adding in addition to the eastern street side of the property. Property is located in AE thirteen flood zone. Foundation will have flood vents, even though it's a walkout, and there'll be no habitable space in the lower level.
Using existing foundation with the exception of the additions.
We should, we'll make a note that the Concom referrals say that it was just voted on last night, so the office here does not have their current decision. And that engineering has suggested that the Concom in their decision have the soil control and erosion standards that would be used on the plan.
Mr. Chairman, would we put in language to the findings that the reasoning for doing that and not waiting for the the Concom hard copy of that was because the applicant's insurance needs prohibited, I mean, needed us to speed this up a little bit to help them?
Sure, we can, we
Could be some kind of language to that or no?
Sure, we can definitely do that.
Project is a four bedroom remaining at four.
The the original ZBA decision identified it as eighty-seven Gene Path?
Yeah, and the original ZBA decision is just a little iffy. It actually doesn't tell how many bedrooms the house had. Their main concern was a sunroom was being changed to a wood frame timber structure, and that that couldn't be used as a bedroom. So we really don't have any reference to bedrooms except what they're telling us now, so we should probably just go with it's a four. Health Department looked at it as a four. We should put, again, from the Health Department referral that the septic tank being installed, will make the ten foot setback from the proposed increase in foundation size. We should make note that the applicant has not applied for disposal works permit to install the tank. And also that the Health Department has no other issues with the project, providing that the proposed foundation meets title five setbacks to both the leaching and the proposed tank.
Yeah, when you, in your finding, when you refer to the that they're using the existing foundation, I think you should say that's the read, one of the reasons they can't move further back from the three foot contour.
Yep, that's that's great to put in there.
Okay. Anything else for findings?
No, and just yeah, from the, just assesses apartment that this includes lots one twenty and lot one twenty-one.
All right, conditions.
How how about are we going to identify that as Charles River and dis and disallow? Well, I guess by by superseding the previous special permit, it takes that other that other address out of the game, right?
Yeah, we just made a finding that the previous application showed the address as Gene Road. It's now Charles River. It was renamed Charles River. East, I think. It was named renamed Charles River.
Okay. Be designated.
Be designated.
Still exists.
Oh, be designated.
All right, conditions?
Per plans. Condition it on the Concom approval decision. It will still be submitted to the file. Condition that soil erosion and sediment control standards must be designated in the ComCom. I guess, decision. Property is remaining four bedrooms. No habitable space.
Fenced off?
See, I don't know because.
I'm surprised it wasn't already being that it, it was compromised that dwelling, but. As part of the demo permit, that, that may be dictated in that, right?
Well, it's hard to say because the, uh, because we don't have the Concom permit, I would think they would have put something, but they may not have. So. If you want to add something in that.
No, no, I'm just, I was just curious why I, I, it just occurred to me that. That's probably going to be part of the demolition permit. They'll have to get outside of our purview anyway. Never mind.
And then we need, and then we need to put section ninety nine dash one, a fixing of legible numbers required and time limit for compliance. Uh, and I think, uh, where we put no habitable space in basement, um, due to property being in AE, AE thirteen in the lower level is not above that grade.
That was already in the findings, so right?
Yeah, I just want to repeat it again, just because it's kind of weird.
Anything else? Thank you, Bob. Anything else from anyone?
Sure.
We usually put in something and it's not in here again because the Concom permit, I, I don't know if they do it or not. Maybe Noreen would know, but we're doing that. When we do these dry wells now, Noreen, we're asking that they actually be. Inspected while open. Does Concom putting that in theirs? Or do they not consider, did they not get involved with that? Because if not, we should have it in this one.
Yeah, I think it's probably best for us to include that in our decisions so that if it is repetitive, that's fine. But if they don't have that, we've got them covered.
Yeah, so we did the same with that. Do they need a demarcated, uh? Limit of work on the plan?
I think that sounds reasonable as well. That's probably also in conservations, I think.
So we'll, so we'll add it in and then if any of these are doubled up, we can just go with conservation.
Right. I think what we can do is we can list those and then we can then defer to conservation as an override for anything that appears to be repetitive.
All right. Last call for anything else. All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Scott. Roll call vote. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
And Forman, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zlinski.
And TJ Hari, I. So the motion passes unanimously. Attorney Clower, thank you.
Thank you again very much.
And so, Mr. Chairman, I will be recusing again on the next handy lane for same reasons as the first one.
Very good. All right. So, uh, up next, we do have the next application, application one dash twenty one, Goodwin, six Handy Lane in Falmouth.
Yes, and I'm going to stand in for Mr. Dugan again.
Noreen has the honors once again. Go ahead, Noreen.
Public notice is hereby given that William J. and Maura Goodwin of Winchester, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty three C. Of the code of Falmouth to construct a mud room. And in addition to the first floor and construct a second floor addition to the existing dwelling. On subject property known as six Handy Lane in Falmouth, Mass. And for referrals. See, we first have the water department. They state that the water service needs to be shown on the plans from the main to the home. The home is fed from a six inch main. And it has a two inch shared service now. The service may need to be renewed from the curb stop to the home. Due to the two inch feed and especially if there will be plumbing included with the second floor addition. Board of Health states that disposable works permit or septic has been issued for a four bedroom septic system. Which coincides with the plans showing four bedrooms. Engineering states that the application was reviewed for impacts to the public right of ways and public utilities. Handy Lane is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. The plans show that the existing driveway is not fully located on the parcel. A portion of it is on the abutting lot. If the driveway is moved off the abutting lot in the future, a driveway permit will be required. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters or public right of ways. We recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells, rain garden or other stormwater infiltration measure for the new roof area at a minimum. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per section ninety nine dash one, a fixing of legible numbers required. Timeline, time limit, excuse me, for compliance. And then where this site is a small lot that slopes down to the street and abutters. And no permit from engineering will be required. We request that erosion and sediment controls are included. For this project to can protect the town right of way. Abutters and the town's downstream stormwater system. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work, a construction entrance. And include proposed erosion and sediment controls around the limit of work. They also request that the following condition be included. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Which document can be found on engineering division's. Page of the town website. And that references to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division would be replaced by the zoning board of appeals. Who is the permit granting authority for this project. Conservation has no comment as it appears to be out of their jurisdiction. No comment from the assessor. Fire department has no issues with the project and no comment from planning. And that is all your first.
Wonderful job once again, Noreen. And, uh, since Bob recused himself for the same reason as the application earlier on in the night. Gave that application to, uh, Mary. So I think it's only fair to appoint, uh, James on this application. Uh, and also, uh, before we start. I just wanted to point out that there was a communication in the chat earlier. I don't even know if anyone saw it, but you know, the way things are these ways. This way on Zoom, just need to point that out. Attorney Clower, I believe your. Client Bill Goodwin said, hello, Ed, Bill Goodwin here, Jack Soromi's son-in-law here for six handy. However innocuous as it might seem, I just wanted to point that out. Ed, I just want to confirm with you that, um. Your relationship or lack of relationship. With Jack Soromi, if that would affect you in any way, shape or form sitting on this application and if you could be impartial. Very good.
I can be impartial, I.
All right, and is the board okay with Ed sitting on this application? Based upon what he said.
Right.
All right, and Attorney Clower, I assume that you're okay with that as well?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, may I make a suggestion that we vote now on going past nine thirty?
That is an excellent idea.
Sir?
Nope, that's an excellent idea.
Make a motion that we continue to ten?
I'll second it.
All right, so motion to continue to ten made by Scott, seconded by James, roll call vote. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
James?
James Morrisey.
Ken?
And Forman, I.
Scott?
Scott Zlinski.
And TJ Hari, I. So the board's business will continue to ten o'clock. Uh, and Attorney Clower, before you begin, just confirming that you're okay. Given, uh, what was stated by Ed.
Yeah, I, I have no objection. I.
Sure, you're good. Whatever you're ready, go right ahead.
Great, thank you, uh, again, uh, for the fourth and final time this evening. Uh, good evening, Mr. Hari, members of the board. For the record's sake, my name is Kevin Clower. And I'm here tonight representing William and Maura Goodwin. They're the owners of Six Handy Lane. And, uh, they are here with us this evening in the, uh, in the audience, so to speak. They are seeking permission. To alter the existing non-conforming dwelling at their property at Six Handy Lane. This will sound very familiar in description, uh, as it is, uh, across the street from, uh, a property we discussed earlier. And Handy Lane is on the southern side of Queen Street. This lot in question is ten thousand forty square feet. And it's located in the residential C zoning district. Presently, there's a two bedroom, single family dwelling with a semi-attached garage. With a footprint of fourteen hundred and sixty square feet. Uh, that is lot coverage by structure of fourteen point five percent, well below the twenty percent that's allowed. This structure is non-conforming to front yard setback being twenty one point one feet where twenty five is required. And side yard setback to the garage being four point six feet where ten is required. It is otherwise conforming to setbacks and lot coverage requirements. The applicant has recently made this their full-time residence and they're seeking to improve the usefulness of the site. Uh, and in doing so, they're seeking to reconfigure the existing first floor with a better layout. And add some living space on the second floor. Relocate one bedroom to the second floor and add some others as well. Other than a minor change to the landing, the footprint remains the same. Uh, there's no effect on the existing non-conforming setbacks, either the front yard or the side yard. There's no new non-conformity that's being created. And the resulting locker which by structure will still be below fifteen percent. Uh, they have proposed a new four bedroom septic. To accommodate this change. And again, uh, it's worth noting that this project has changed since the initial application. There wasn't another addition on the southern side of the building that's been removed, uh, and that's reflected in the plans that were submitted last week. This does require special permit under two forty three C, uh, in which pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed. Provided that the, uh, board finds that the alteration or the proposed alteration is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. Uh, in this instance, there's no new non-conformities being created. The existing non-conforming setbacks are unaffected. The property will otherwise conform to setback and lot coverage requirements. There's no impact on views and vistas and it will certainly remain in line with the other, uh, homes in the neighborhood. This project would be a significant improvement, both aesthetically and from a usefulness standpoint for the applicants. It meets the standards of two forty three C and two forty two sixteen. And I'm not aware of any adverse effects that would overbalance, uh, the beneficial effects, uh, benefits we discussed. Uh, I believe this board can and should grant the special permit and I'd be willing and happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Very good. Thank you, Attorney Clower. Uh, on to board questions. Ed, anything?
I have no questions.
All right. James?
Clower, is the existing septic a two bedroom or is it a existing four bedroom?
My, my understanding of, of septic systems and, and it's limited and I'm sure I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but my, my understanding is that generally speaking, unless there's a deed restriction, all septics are designed for three. And it will be upgraded to a four bedroom now.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Ken, anything?
Kevin, you said something about. So the. There wasn't an addition proposed to the south side, but that's not. Is that, is that reflected on the, on the plan of, uh, September, uh? What's the date here? September two? That we have?
Well, I, I submitted plans last week. There, if you look at the revision dates, uh, on the, about two thirds of the way over on the left. The most recent revision date is one thirty twenty one.
Okay, so. So, so I'm looking at the older plan, so can you just?
I'd be happy to share my screen, Mr. Foreman.
That's all right. I really only have one question about it. I just, what's the, what's the lot coverage when you're done?
Uh, lot coverage will be fourteen point eight percent.
By structures?
Yes. And by structures paving and parking will be twenty point one percent.
Instead of twenty two point eight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
All right, thank you, Ken. Scott?
Attorney Clower, is there any formal agreement with the D. Christopheros, um, with regards to the encroachment on their property?
No, there is not. My, that driveway has been like that since long before my client bought the property. He wasn't actually aware that there was an encroachment until the survey came in. So.
How do we address that or how is it going to be addressed or is it going to be addressed?
Well, uh, that's a good question. Um, if the board were to, uh, feel strongly, I suppose my client would have to remove that encroachment. Uh, but there's no, there was no formal agreement at this point. You know, my client, I think, having been made aware of it, will, will have to take steps to correct it.
Has he but have been aware, made aware of it?
I, I don't know.
We should probably find that out, huh? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Scott. Uh, Mary, anything?
Yeah, I, I would just agree with Scott that, uh. Having a driveway that's on somebody else's property needs to be remedied so it isn't.
Thank you, Mary. All right, and my issues were already taken care of. And we'll turn it to public comment and I see that it may be the butter Joy D. Christopher. And, uh, if anyone else out there has a question, comment or concern, go ahead and click the raised hand icon. And we'll get to you shortly. Did we lose the D. Christopher somehow? They didn't have their hand raised. I lost them. There we are. Uh, okay, so, uh, Joy D. Christopher, you've been elevated. You'll have to unmute yourself. In order to participate.
In order to participate. Yes, okay. Hi, I am.
Joy, uh, before you begin, we're getting a lot of feedback. I can hear my own voice going back and forth. So if you have multiple. If you're watching on TV or if you have, uh, multiple. Devices open, you'll have to either mute or turn them off. You're back on mute.
I, I think she's working on it.
Yep.
Okay, are we all set here?
Sounds like we are. Go right ahead.
Okay, so I am the butter and I have spoken, um, with the owner. About not replacing the old driveway onto my property and he said that he, um. He.
Let me speak.
Just a minute, let my husband speak.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Kenneth, Joyce's husband. When Mr. Goodwin first moved in. I went over there with our survey, which when we bought this house was in oh four. We had a survey done and we had the town. I went up to the town limits and I got the town subdivision. And I went over all the dimensions with Mr. Goodwin. And told him that his property line from the side of the garage. Was no more than five feet off. And we have the corner boxes. We have the markers. All around the property, the original markers. And. So. We decided to put up a fence. So we put up a small fence, just a small picket fence. You'll see it on the plans there. And we put it one foot. On our side of the benchmarker. And we ran it. Till the boat. I don't know, ten feet from the end of the road. And we went away for a weekend and when we came back. Mr. Goodwin. Had cut the fence off at the end of his driveway. Where, where his garage, where his garages. He cut our fence off and he had removed it. And I have a spinal cord injury. I'm a disabled veteran. I called the police and the police saw me just to put it back in place. Well, I can't do that every weekend when Joyce and I want to go away for something. So we elected not to do that. And. So he was well aware. I showed him. The, um. The plans, the survey. And I gave him. And I gave him two years. He told me in six months, he was going to have a survey. Another six months passed, another six months, and another six months passed. And I said, Bill, when are you going to have a survey for this? Because if you don't get a survey, I'm going to have to put up a fence. So he said, well, I guess I'm not going to get a survey. I said, well, I'm going to put up a fence then. And so I did it. And then I told you the story, how he took the fence down. And then when they repaved the driveway, he just blatantly ignored it. And he went over and he paved over all the way up to where the old driveway was. And on top of that, he put a drainage system in there. He put a sewer in there on top of that. And you'll see on the plans that that actually is on our property line also. So it hasn't been addressed. We're not that happy. We don't want to go to law court and pay for a lawyer, which he's threatened. I'll pay for a lawyer, I got plenty of money, he says. But we don't, we're both retired. So that's where we're at.
All right.
So if something could be remedied, yes, Joyce would like to go ahead and have something else done about it.
All right. So Mr. D. Christopher, I'm understanding that it would be your preference for the applicant to remove the existing pavement that encroaches on your property back to their side, including the catch basin that is shown on the plan?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I appreciate your help.
All right. Go ahead, Scott.
Attorney Clower, not to put you on the spot, but are you aware of those conditions or that situation happening prior to this meeting? You're on mute.
I'm here on mute, Attorney Clower.
Thank you for asking, Mrs. Zelinski. I was unaware of that.
It seems like to me that that needs something to be addressed. And that may be even a civil matter that's outside of our purview.
Sure. I, I, I haven't had a chance to discuss it with my client, so I don't, I don't feel as though I can say much about what was said one way or the other. It is the first I'm hearing of that. As I said, I did discuss the encroachment with my client. And he did say that, you know, if the board were to condition it, he would certainly have to correct it.
But if there's some kind of, and again, I'm not a lawyer, you are. It is, if we were to approve this project tonight, even with conditions that there may be some legalities going into it that we already know about, would that be prudent?
Well, I think if you were to condition it such that he had to make, he had to correct that issue, I think that, I don't think it's not a prudent decision for you to make. I think that there are civil issues that are outside of the board's purview. But the board does have some, some power here, and I think that they could, could use that. I don't think it would. You know, the question as to a special permit relates to issues of zoning and whether or not what the applicant is proposing is substantially more detrimental than what exists. I don't think that the driveway condition is relevant exactly to that question. I think that it could be conditioned that he takes steps to correct it. But as to the actual question before you, which is, is, is the proposal for the dwelling more detrimental than what, what is currently on the ground? And I think the answer to that is it's not.
Okay. My next question is for either the administrator or the, the chair. Question out of bounds, I mean, if we were, if we were to approve this before that gets resolved, are we, are we allowing an illegality? Illegality?
Illegality?
Illegality, yeah. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Just, I'm just talking about, you prove a project that other than that aspect is pretty straightforward. But knowing that there's an issue, does that leave us open if there's any civil behind it that makes us culpable or a party to? Just, just, it's just a question that I don't know the answer to, and I don't.
I can, sorry, go, go ahead, Noreen.
Yeah. Yeah, so what I would suggest is that, you know, the survey clearly shows an encroachment. The neighbors have confirmed that that's indeed the case. So certainly as part of a condition, if you are to approve this, would be to have that situation remedied. And that's, you know, not to say that there couldn't be something further civil. But I think it's certainly, if you do approve, it's fair to the butter that their property be returned to proper order.
Well said, Noreen. And I, and I can say generally speaking, when the board does identify certain encroachments on plans, we generally at least inquire and ask for it to be removed. I think that's especially important, given the immediate butter's concerns regarding that encroachment.
Just so I'm clear, there is no civil action underway either way right at the moment, though, right?
Right. Doesn't, doesn't sound like there is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Anything else from the board? All right. And I didn't see anyone else for public comment. Last call for any, any other follow-up questions from the board? All right, seeing none. How would the board like to proceed?
I think we can close.
All right. You want to make that motion, Ken? Second. All right, so the motion made to close, seconded by Ed, roll call, vote, Ed? Advan, you're an I. Everyone's moving around. Ken?
Ken Foreman, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
And James, you were on this one, right?
I was more so.
And TJ Hurry, I. Hearing's closed. How would the board like to proceed? Do you want to have? Yeah, I was, I was going to ask, do we, do we want to have discussion prior to making a decision? I believe there was that issue of the encroachment. I for one would like that to be resolved. Especially given the concerns of the butter. Not only did you have the encroachment of the driveway, there's an existing catch basin that also shows on the plan that looks like it's on the property line.
I agree. I'm uncomfortable with it the way it stands without some kind of resolution going forward.
I would ask him to move it at one foot off the property line.
And it does look like they have some room to play with there on the other side.
They do. They could expand the driveway to the, to the south.
Toward the house itself.
How much of the drainage structure underground is on the butter's property as well?
Can't quite tell.
Well, most.
Like half.
Oh, you would, you would think if you look at any tropical structure, at least 50% of it extends beyond the cover. Not to mention stone, if it's surrounded by stone, so. I'll defer to my colleagues on this, but I, I think it needs to be addressed before we.
No, I think we all agree. So that's just a condition for this project to go forward.
All right.
But I'm saying I would move it one foot beyond the property line. No question.
Remove the catch basin.
Yeah.
Now, does that have to be inspected or does it have to be an ASB built on that prior to that to make sure where it is or where it's not?
Noreen, I think you're indicating yes.
I would, I would suggest that given the proximity and given the encroachments, that it would make best sense to have that, particularly the catch basin inspected to ensure that it is properly moved entirely the applicant's property.
That would certainly sew it up.
And engineering had a number of proposed conditions for you as well. So I think it would be certainly efficient to just include that.
Sounds good. All right. Would anyone like to make a motion then?
Move we approve with conditions?
Second.
All right, motion approved made by Ken with conditions and seconded by Ed, findings?
So I guess we're finding, with the exception of the encroachment, that this is, well, it's no more detrimental.
Right. There are some existing non-conformities, so 243C, 240, 216.
But substantially detrimental to the butter?
Right. It's not any, what they're proposing is, is no more detrimental. It's already, there's some, anyway, they're going to remedy that when we, with the conditions.
Right.
Yeah, so one of the findings is there is a substantial encroachment to the north onto the property of the butter.
And the encroachment's going, the encroachment's going to be rectified and and it was actually to prove, to prove that it's been totally rectified?
When we get to conditions.
Yeah.
All right. So the encroachment.
The finding is, and, and actually the Attorney Clower said the, you know, the butter acknowledged that the encroachment existed and that they would be willing to remedy it if we insisted, so. There didn't seem to be any disagreement there.
So that would be the finding, that would be.
That would be the finding.
Right.
But it includes not only the pavement, it also includes that.
Right, which includes a catch basin. That's a good point.
Right. Okay, engineering.
I have a question on that, since you're on that. What, what about the fence that was taken down? Who puts a fence up?
Yeah, I was wondering about that, but you know, that.
That's borderline punitive, isn't it?
Well, I, I think that's just goes beyond the scope of our zoning.
I, I think we're getting into civil litigation issues.
Exactly. I agree with.
We have the ability to permit.
I agree with James.
Unfortunately, beyond the purview of the board.
Yeah.
I think you could, you could potentially request, if you are granting, that the neighbor during the construction process might consider assisting their neighbor.
But not subsequent to the removal of the other fence? You can't have language in there, right?
Yes.
Have we lost our chairman?
Uh-oh.
Didn't lose me just dealing with a stray cat, not a.
Lawyers this week.
Not a filter, not a filter, an actual cat.
You're herding cats?
Something like that. I was listening to the conversation, though, I promise you that.
Yeah. All right, so I think, do we, consensus seems to be that insisting we can request, but not demand replacement of the fence.
Right. Well, our jurisdiction only goes to this, the applicant's property. It doesn't go to.
Are we in conditions or we still have findings right now?
We're still in, we're still in findings.
So the finding would be that the, there was testimony to the effect that a fence installed on the butter's property was removed to, you know, to, so that the driveway could be constructed.
The applicant is putting in a four-bedroom septic, which is an improvement over the three, believe the existing three-bedroom septic.
All right. Do we hit on engineering's findings? Demarcating the limit of work, the construction entrance and the sediment controls? Now, we'll, we'll back that up with, I'm sorry, we'll back that up with conditions.
Yeah, with the.
And, yeah, and you also have the water finding. They discussed that there was a two-inch service showing now. They stated that it may need to be renewed from the curb stop to the home if there's plumbing to be on the second floor of the addition.
Okay.
We have to put the existing deck is going to be removed and replaced with a new landing?
All right. Anything else for findings?
Yeah, and that the setback will remain, I guess, the same, 211, right?
Yep, remaining the same.
So none of that? All right, are we ready to move on to conditions?
I have one more question. It shows a shower out back.
Yeah.
And not a rinse station. All right, yeah, no, I'm good.
But there's no lot coverage issue.
Right, right, right. That's, I just, I just.
There are 14.8% lot coverage, which.
Just doesn't show it tied in anywhere on the plan.
It's gray water and it needs to be into the plumbing, into the septic or the Title V.
So that should, that should be, that should be a condition, right?
Okay. It should, Scott.
Yeah. One hopes the building commissioner does these things.
Right. Other conditions?
So conditions as per plan and then the removal of the, I, I would like to say removal of the driveway with at least one foot of clearance, you know, clearance beyond the property line.
All right, which includes the catch basin.
And the catch basin.
Did you want to?
Yeah, we probably, that was, Noreen thought that was a good idea. I agree.
I do too.
And that would include an inspection as well, that there's verification that the dry well is, excuse me, the catch basin is completely on the butter's property.
Not on the butter's property.
On the applicant's property.
All right. Anything else for either findings or conditions?
Condition that the shower be tied into the exist, to the new septic.
All right. Anything else?
You have the engineering list, which includes, all right, so you've dealt with the driveway. If there's any change to utilities, they will need permission for that, no stormwater runoff. They need to have dry wells for the new roof runoff. They need to post the address, section 99-1. And then we should also request or require the erosion and sediment control to be shown on the property to protect the town right of way in a butter's, as well as the town's downstream stormwater system. And the plan should be revised to show that demarcated limit of work, construction entrance, and the erosion and sediment controls.
All right. So just about do it?
Yeah, we've been, you know, you've been putting in work hours on a lot of these, if you want to include those.
All right, so we'll do that. The hours that we've been sticking with?
Yeah.
All right.
Done the permit right now. They're working on it right now, too, so. They're doing the interior gut.
All right. All right. Anything else?
So that will be seven to seven, Monday through Friday, Saturday eight to four, and no construction.
Yes, please. Okay, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Ken and seconded by Ed, roll call vote.
Lots of help from everybody.
With why, yeah, little help from everyone there. Ben Karen, I. James?
James Morse.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski.
And TJ Hurry, I, so the motion passes unanimously with conditions. Thank you, Attorney Flower.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate all of your time tonight on this and every other hearing, have a great night.
You too.
You too.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. The time.
10:15.
All right, motion to continue the board's business to 10:15 tonight, that was made by Scott, is there a second? Second by Ken, roll call vote for everyone, Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
James?
James Morse.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
And TJ Hurry, I, so that passes unanimously, and Scott, thank you for keeping an eye on the clock tonight.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have, that does it for public hearings, we're on to open meeting items. Voting the minutes for January 21st, 2021.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for January 21.
21.
I'll second Mr. Van Karen's motion.
All right, thank you, Ed, thank you, Scott, roll call vote, Ed?
Ed Van Karen, I.
James?
James Morse.
Ken?
And Forman, I.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
And TJ Hurry, I, so the minutes pass unanimously. Up next, we have reviewing the draft decision with possible vote on 63-20 Helma Circle LLC, seven vacant lots off of Worcester Court and Helma Circle Falmouth, so everyone will recall that this was modification of a previously approved permit. The hearing's been closed, no more testimony will be taken. Maureen circulated drafts of the decision earlier this week.
So Mr. Chairman, I, I need to read the, the draft and modification of comprehensive permit into the record, but when I get to findings and conditions, we can take them one at a time.
Sure, you want to start us off, Bob?
Yeah, so this is modification to comprehensive permit, case number 63-20 Helma Circle LLC, 100 River Park Drive, North Reading, Mass. Development name is Little Pond Village at Falmouth Heights, the subject property is seven vacant lots up Worcester Court and Helma Circle, Falmouth, Massachusetts, plus an undeveloped right-of-way. Sessors map, 39, section 16, parcel 001A, lots 003, 004, 005, 006, and 007. Map 39, section 16, parcel 001A, lots 009 and 010. And I think that has to say lot in front of 010. Map 39, section 17, parcel 002, and lot 16, collectively known as the premises. The deed certificate, 199185190991199186199184. Book 4826, page 69. Summary modifications to comprehensive permit 090-17 in 090-17M granted under case number 63-20. History, one zoning board of appeals filed the decision for granting comprehensive permit 090-117 on August 24, 2018. Two, the decision was appealed by Sandra Spotes at Alta Bunchville Superior Court, a stipulation of dismissal is pending. And I don't know, we'll have to check with the administrator if that is still pending. Three, by order remanding case to Falmouth zoning board of appeals and to continue trial dated January 31st, 2020. Associate Justin Thomas J. Perino allowed a motion for remand of comprehensive permit 090-17 to the Falmouth zoning board of appeals to vote on the changes proposed for settlement. Four, the zoning board of appeals filed a modification of comprehensive permit 090-17M on February 26, 2020. The modification includes a shift to the positioning of dwellings on lots 12 and 13, installation of a split rail fence along the proposed limited work line, and approval of a revised dimensional chart. I don't know if you need to, to refer to the actual chart. Five, by letter dated September 14th, 2020, Peter L. Freeman, attorney for Helma Circle LLC, the applicant, requested the board consider proposed building design changes, some of which included attached garages to the development as insubstantial changes. Six, on October 15th, 2020, the zoning board of appeals considered the request for insubstantial change to the comprehensive permit, following a motion made by Mr. Dugan and seconded by Mr. Van Curran, the vote, the board voted unanimously that the requested modifications constituted a substantial change to comprehensive permit 090-17 and modification 090-17M. The governor declared a state of emergency due to the COVID pandemic commencing on March 12th, 2020, which included provisions for remote public hearings, meetings, and deadlines. Subsequently, the Falmouth zoning board of appeals commenced remote public hearings as of March 19th, 2020, following the declaration. Seven, the board opened a notice public hearing on December 3rd, 2020 for the substantial changes to the comprehensive permit, case number 063-20 for the premises, the hearing was continued to January 21st, 2021, and February 11th of 2021. Voting members included Terrence J. Hurry, Kenneth H. Foreman, Robert B. Dugan, Edward Van Curran, and Edwin P. Zalinski. Nine, appearing before the board on the application were Brian Kelleher for Helma Circle LLC, the applicant, with Peter L. Freeman, attorney, and Brandon Carr, engineer with Dupreid Engineering. Ten, minutes of the hearing on file with the zoning board of appeals and the town clerk. Eleven, the following documents and information are on file in the office of the zoning board of appeals at Town Hall as set forth below. Letters, emails, information from applicant and representatives. Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, 86 Willow Street, Yarmouth Port, Mass, attorney for the applicant, submitted a request for insubstantial change with supporting documentation, request was filed with the town clerk on September 14th, 2020. Little Pond Village at Falmouth Heights, CBA hearing 12320, presented by the Aspen Group, November 30th, 2020, PowerPoint presentation including one, opening remarks, two, ZBA prior approved documents, three, proposed documents, four, comparison lot area and setback chart, five, garages, six. It should say, I think, new house designs, it's a typo, a new house design summary. Seven, modified cape, eight, base cape, nine, ranch, two-story, and ten, summary remarks. Letters, referrals, emails from town departments. Referral dated November 11th, 2020 from the engineering department, signed by Scott Schluter, P.E. Soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions prepared by James McLaughlin, P.E., town engineer, town of Falmouth, appendix B. Referral email dated November 18th, 2020 from conservation, signed by conservation staff, conservation staff. It's a repeat, I think that's a typo. Letters, emails from the butters and interested parties. Email dated January 20th, 2021 from Edward Jalowicz, 120 Worcester Court, Falmouth. Plans submitted by applicant, applicant's representative. Site layout plan, sheet six of 13 dated October 12th, 2017, with a final revision date of November 16th, 2020, as drawn by Dupreid Engineering, 990 Washington Street, Suite 101A, Dedham, Mass. And proposed base cape first floor plan, proposed base cape second floor plan, foundation plan. All plans are dated September 9th, 2020, with three renderings, proposed modified cape first floor plan, proposed modified cape second floor plan, foundation plan. All plans are dated September 9th, 2020, with three renderings, it, it sounds like, it sounds like that needs to be cleaned up, it's just repeating. Proposed second floor plan, proposed ranch foundation plan, all plans are submitted, are dated September 9th, 2020, with four renderings prepared for Helma Circle, Falmouth, Mass, is drawn by designs, is drawn by designs by SPB, the Cassett Mass. Plans are not stamped or signed. Little Pond Village at Falmouth Heights, lot area and setback chart, proposed revisions 91020. Appendix A, Little Pond Village at Falmouth Heights, lot area and setback chart, comparison, proposed versus prior approval 91020. Site layout, Little Pond Village at Falmouth Heights, sheet six of 13, prepared by Dupreid Engineering, 990 Washington Suite 101A, Dedham, Mass. Revision date 102620. Findings, the zoning board of appeals carefully considered the facts and evidence submitted for the hearing and made the following finding. Finding number one, the board found that the modification request constituted a substantial change to comprehensive permit 09017 in 0917M. The board had specifically negotiated the removal of all garages as part of granting 28 house lots. The modification includes three new house designs plus garages for 22 lots. Two, revised house designs were related to an analysis of current real estate market in more aesthetic house plans. If anyone has any comments on these as I go, just tell me. Three, the plan changes resulted in an approximate overall decrease of 6.2% of impervious area. Four, setbacks and lot coverage have primarily remained the same from the previous permit. Five, single car attached garages are proposed for 22 of the 28 houses. Six of the seven affordable houses will have garages. Garages are planned for lots two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28. Six, house designs include three two-story ranches, 19 base capes, and six modified capes, all to be three-bedroom homes with full basements. Seven, the two-story ranches are proposed to be sited on lots 24, 25, and 27, and will have an attached single car garage. Eight, the modified capes are proposed to comprise 1743 square feet of area and be sited on lots 1, 14, 15, 21, 22, and 23. These dwellings will have no garage but may have an 80-square-foot shed. The base capes are proposed to be sited on lots two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 26, and 28. And will have an attached single car garage. The base cape shall comprise of 1728 square feet of area plus a 222-square-foot garage with storage area above. These dwellings only may also contain a 10-foot by 10-foot bonus room on the rear of the dwelling, no sheds allowed. One of the affordable dwellings shall include a bonus room. The ranches are proposed to compromise 1,948 square feet of living space with an attached single car garage comprising 240 square feet, no sheds allowed. One ranch dwelling shall be affordable. 11, seven dwellings shall remain affordable in perpetuity and shall include lots. And the lots right now have left, I left blank, but while I'm on this, I looked over the plan earlier, and I'm going to give you a suggestion of the lots. For the base capes, it would be lot five, lot nine, lot 16, lot 20, and lot 28. For the modified cape, it would be lot one, and for the two-story ranch, it would be lot 24, and that gives you that comprises now with five base capes, one modified cape, and one two-story ranch. One of the affordable lots shall contain the two-story ranch, one shall, affordable lots shall contain a rear 10-foot by 10-foot bonus room included, and six of the seven affordable lots shall have garages. Market rate units are anticipated to sell for approximately 650 to 700,000. I don't know if it should be put in that finding that that's the information coming from the applicant, we're not actually putting those costs in place. Does anyone have any additions or questions on any of the findings so far?
I do like that idea of modifying 12 to say the testimony from the applicant indicates that they anticipate to sell the units rather than just because we don't, who knows?
Yeah. And on item number 10, Maureen, just refer to the ranches, like, as two-story ranches, just so that runs the same all the way through.
Anything else for the findings?
No, I just had, I guess, a question because I was reading it through, so on the, on the, on the sheds, there were two references in here, one was for 80-square-foot sheds, and another one was for just the 10 by 10 bonus room right there, so the shed, the shed size is limited to the 80, to the 80 square feet. They wouldn't be able to apply for a 10 by 10 shed, this would limit them to the 80 square feet.
Actually, I think your original decision said a 10 by 10 shed, I think it was a max of 100, and I thought there was testimony that it would be limited to 80. I'll, I'll double-check on that, but if there's discrepancy, your original.
There was, yeah, I think there was testimony, so.
I think you're, yeah.
All right, and, sorry, go ahead, Bob.
When I made the suggestion of the base, of which capes were affordable, which homes, I basically did in a four-count, every four homes, making sure that one was included as a ranch and one was included as a modified cape, I did not check when it refers to the cape that has the bonus room. The bonus room isn't allowed a shed. So I just want to make sure that on whatever base cape we've picked for the bonus room isn't the one that's cut out here that isn't allowed a shed, are they specific?
I'm not sure about that, Bob, I don't have.
I just didn't do the count that way, I didn't, every other, so I didn't double-check that each one had a garage or each one had. So we would just have to review to make sure that if those are what we're suggesting, that, that, that what they are is what everybody wants them to be. If we go to conditions.
Sure, and before we do that, Bob, I just want, two things, I just want to make sure who the voting members are, if we are going to vote on the conditions, and two, it is 10:12, so we'll need to vote to extend our time.
Motion to 10:30, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Need to make it 11, we do it once.
So, certainly doesn't mean we have to go to 11, but why don't we do that, Scott?
Take a wild read on it.
Make a motion to go to 11.
Second.
Motion to go to 11 made by Scott, seconded by Ed, roll call vote again, as Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
James?
James Morse.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski.
TJ Hurry, I, so the board's business will continue to not to exceed 11 o'clock.
And Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, the voting members included Terrence J. Hurry, Kenneth H. Foreman, Robert Dugan, Edward Van Curran, and Edward P. Zalinski, so it's all the regular members.
All right, thank you, Bob. All right. Ready to get into the conditions?
Yeah, so, condition number one, the conditions in this decision, 63-20, are meant to correct, amend, or enhance condition from comprehensive permit 090-17 and 09017M. Any conditions contained herein that is inconsistent or in conflict with the condition from the comprehensive permit 09017 or 09017M, the condition listed herein shall control.
Everyone okay with?
Yeah, you want to just do a vote on each one, or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do a roll call vote on each one. Ed? So we're, we're voting, okay.
If we, if, just a question, so if we're voting conditions, can we still go back if we have to add a finding?
To go back to how to finding?
Well, I just, I, I don't know if we should have a finding regarding me, so there was a discussion that the town's new process regarding all these projects going forward include a engineering peer review. regarding all these projects going forward include a engineering peer review. This project has not actually pulled permits or anything on them, so I would assume, but I, I won't step that far, that because it hasn't, we would also need to do that engineering peer review. So I don't know if that should be in the finding because I know it was brought up. It seemed like the applicable was amenable to it at the time because it's the new town process, but it does not appear in the previous decision, and it doesn't appear in a finding here.
We can certainly add that finding in.
All right.
So condition one, conditions in this decision sixty-three dash twenty are meant to correct, amend, or enhance conditions from comprehensive permit zero nine zero one seven and zero nine seven, zero nine zero one seven M. Any conditions contained herein that is inconsistent or in conflict with the condition from comprehensive permit zero nine zero one seven or zero nine zero one seven M, the condition listed here shall control.
Good. So we'll do a roll call vote for each condition. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Otzelinski, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So condition one passes unanimously.
Two, each condition in this decision shall run with the land and shall, in accordance with its terms, be applicable to, to and binding on the applicant and the applicant's successors and assigns.
All right. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
TJ Hurry, I. Condition two passes unanimously.
Condition three, the construction shall be substantially as shown on the plans submitted and reviewed by the board listed below, which replaces the plans referenced in zero nine zero one seven and zero nine zero one seven M, though subject to additional conditions separately delineated. One, site layout plan, sheet six of thirteen dated October twelfth, twenty seventeen, with a final revision date of November sixteenth, twenty twenty, as drawn by Dupreid Engineering, nine ninety Washington Street, Suite one oh one A, Dedham, Mass. And proposed base cape, first floor plan, proposed base cape, second floor plan, foundation plan, and all plans are dated September ninth, twenty twenty, with three renderings. Proposed modified cape first floor plan, proposed, proposed modified cape second floor plan, foundation plan, all plans are dated September ninth, twenty twenty, with three renderings. Proposed ranch, first floor plan, proposed ranch, second floor plan, proposed ranch, foundation plan. All plans are dated September ninth, twenty twenty, with four renderings prepared for Helma Circle. Falmouth, Mass. Is drawn by designs by SPB, Picassid, Mass. Plans are not stamped or signed. Correction of conditions number four and number five of zero nine zero dash one seven. Little Pond Village at Falmouth Heights Lot Area and Setback Chart, Proposed Revisions, zero nine one zero twenty, Appendix A. Little Pond Village at Falmouth Heights Lot Area and Setback Chart Comparison, Proposed Versus Prior Approval, nine ten twenty. Site Layout Plan, Little Pond Village at Falmouth Heights, Sheet six of thirteen, prepared by Dupreid Engineering, nine ninety Washington Street, Suite one oh one A, Dedham, Mass. Revised Date, ten twenty-six twenty. Above, when it's referring to the plans, the ranch plan refers to the proposed ranch foundation, but the other plans don't refer to those individual plans' foundations, so maybe we could add in the proposed modified cape foundation plan and base cape foundation plan.
So you're asking, you're moving it with, with those modifications?
Yeah, only because the, the ranch one is labeled proposed ranch foundation plan. And the only other question I have, Norine, is where it says proposed ranch? Is that how they are in the plans or did they say proposed two-story ranch?
I believe the way it's referenced here is exactly the way it was worded on the sheet that was submitted to us.
Okay.
All right, so we're moving to.
Right, we got to vote this, right?
Right, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to clarify. So we're going to vote with, with those changes?
Yep, for item number, for condition number three.
For condition three. All right, so voting for condition three as amended by Bob. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So condition three passes unanimously.
Prior to site work, condition four. In furtherance of condition number twenty from permit zero nine zero one seven, there shall be no access by workers to the premises prior to the approved construction hours of seven AM or after seven PM, Monday through Saturday. No Sunday or holiday hours are allowed absent an emergency. All construction vehicles, it says and, which I think has to be, shall remain strictly on the subject property and not obstruct sidewalks or park on abutting streets. Construction vehicles are prohibited from idling on or near the premises outside of construction hours. During construction, efforts shall be undertaken to minimize impacts on abutters, including securing dumpsters, stabilizing soil to guard against erosion from a rain event, and ensuring that public roadways are kept clean in compliance with the town's Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard Conditions, eight twenty twenty Appendix B. The applicant shall consult with Town Engineering Peer Inspection Engineer regarding a preferred construction route to protect town roads, and installation of a wash station and dust management during construction, and shall comply with general engineering requirements. I just have two questions. I know normally on the referrals, they ask that the zoning board of appeals be inserted in place of town engineering for the standards document. And my other question is, I know that when they discussed this originally, the, the construction entrance was only from Worcester Court. It wasn't from Lucerne, so I don't know if that has to be referenced here or not.
So I added the construction entrance just down a little bit further on condition seven?
And do we have to be, you know, placed in place of town engineering just for that document, like they usually put us in because we're the only permitting authority?
Oh, we can certainly add that in, yes.
So condition four as amended by Bob. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
TJ Hurry, I. So condition four passes unanimously.
Condition five, the applicant shall provide to the police, building department, and ZBA the name, phone number, and email address of a project contact individual for the duration of the construction process to ensure that any questions or concerns, including those of abutters and residents, are timely managed. I do have one question on that, too. I know.
Ed Van Kuren, I.
I just have a question, Ed.
Hold on, Ed.
That's okay, I want to go home, too. So is there anything in this document that requires that the applicant have somebody in charge on site at all times of construction?
That would be up to the building department and building code requirements. The purpose behind this is that our office periodically gets calls as well as other departments if there is some type of problem, so we wanted to ensure that we all have the same phone number for an individual who will be responsible.
All right, so we're okay with five, okay with five then?
Just got to vote it in.
All right, voting on condition five. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. Moving on to six.
Condition six, the applicant shall meet with the Falmouth Police Department to determine when or if police details would be required. All police details required by the Falmouth Police Department or per the applicant's own choice shall be paid for by the applicant.
All right, everyone's all set with that?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. Condition six passes unanimously.
The construct, uh, condition seven, the construction entrance is limited to Worcester Court, where access shall only be via stabilized construction entrance.
I would like to change that to the construction entrance shall be limited to Worcester Court, where access shall be, only be via stabilized construction entrance. Okay with that?
What was the difference?
Shall rather than is.
Oh, makes them do it, you know?
Gotcha.
Yep. All right, Ed, I think you're ready to vote on that.
Yes, Ed Van Kuren, I.
Okay, Ken?
Ken, Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. Condition seven passes unanimously.
Condition eight, at the applicant's expense, a site inspector will be designated by the town for this project to act in instead of town engineering due to the lack of capacity, conduct oversight inspections from the firms that have been, from the firms that have been pre-vetted by the town. The site inspector will perform or oversee inspections, testing, material approval, reports, or other construction-related services required, including compliance with the town's Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standards, Appendix B, and report directly to the town's engineering department. The applicant shall establish a fifty-three G account through the zoning board of appeals for the site inspector. And this is changed from condition number twenty-three of ninety dash seventeen.
All right, everyone's okay with that?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. So condition eight passes unanimously.
Condition nine, prior to starting work under, under the comprehensive permit, the applicant and general contractor shall hold a pre-construction meeting with the building commissioner, town engineer, department of public works representative, site inspector, zoning administrator, town planner, and board of health agent to review conditions to ensure compliance with this decision.
Very good.
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Sorry, Ken?
I Ken Forman.
Scott Zelinski, I.
And TJ Hurry, I. Condition nine passes unanimously.
Okay, condition ten, construction shall be in accordance with all requirements of town engineering, including the town's twenty nineteen Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard Conditions, Appendix B. No construction shall begin until the required erosion sediment control standards or in sediment controls are installed and approved. A stabilized construction entrance and wash station is installed and approved. Stormwater and infiltration areas are protected, and the protection means are approved, and the limit of work is demarcated in the field and approved.
Very good.
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
TJ Hurry, I. Condition ten passes unanimously.
Uh, condition eleven, landscaping was referenced to be substantially as shown on conceptual site landscape plan, Little Pond Village at Falmouth Heights, dated, uh, it's a typo. I think it's October. Is that October, Norine?
Yeah.
Yeah, October seventh, twenty seventeen. So you just have to fix the typo. Board received date October nineteenth, seventeen. Per condition number three of permit ninety dash seventeen. Per condition nineteen of permit ninety seventeen. A final plan shall be submitted for approval by the board of appeals or its agent prior to the issuance of a building permit for any dwelling unit. For the first two years following issuance of the final certificate of occupancy, any plant material substantially diseased or dead shall be removed and replaced. Mature trees, particularly those proximate to lot lines, should be maintained to the extent possible. Trees straddling the property line shall be assumed to be jointly owned and cannot be damaged without prior written approval of both parties. Trees to be protected and preserved shall be identified in the field and on a plan, a copy of which shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals.
All right, Ed?
So I just have a quick question. So.
Sorry, go ahead, Bob.
That's okay. So during the hearing, I loved the landscaping in the backyard on the conceptual plan, and I was told that isn't going to be the landscaping. So does this mean that is going to be the landscaping? It should be the landscaping. I just.
I, I think what it is, is they had approved the landscaping for the full site plan and that separately there were landscape scenarios presented for the different home, houses that they planned to build and that there was more detail provided on those individual plans.
So does this refer to the individual plans?
So this does not. This refers to the full site plan.
Okay, and then is it just a typo on landscape at the top?
All right, so we're okay to vote, Bob?
Yep.
All right, Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
TJ Hurry, I. Condition eleven passes unanimously.
So, Norine, just one question. I know we just voted number eleven, but does that not have to be under the title below that says prior to building permit, since it says in there prior to building permit? If so, can we just move the title up one?
You want to move the title up to before landscaping?
Yeah, because the landscaping says in it, it has to be prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Uh, landscaping says, oh, yeah.
Final plan updated.
And then there's a comment. Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, okay. Condition twelve, the applicant shall obtain an approved street opening permit from the engineering division prior to any work within the town's right-of-way and prior to issuance of any building permit application for the project. The applicant contractor shall meet town standard requirements and post any required bond. Release of the bond shall be subject to approval by the engineering division. The roadway shall remain private. That's it.
All right.
So I just have one.
Sorry, go ahead, Bob.
Just for clarification, since we have a site review person, is it, do they have to be included here, too, or just the engineering division? Since they're taking place in a lot of the work of engineering?
Right, so engineering will still be issuing the permits?
Okay. That's fine.
All right, good to go on twelve. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
TJ Hurry, I. Condition twelve passes unanimously.
Condition thirteen, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant is required to submit to mass housing a request for final approval of the project in accordance with the comprehensive permit rules seven sixty CMR fifty-six dash zero four in the guidelines, including Part Three concerning affirmative fair housing marketing and resident selection. A copy of the final approval letter shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
TJ Hurry, I. Condition thirteen passes unanimously.
Fourteen, on a lot-by-lot basis, a certified, I just need to separate a certified, certified plot plan stamped by a licensed surveyor shall be provided to the ZBA for review and approval prior to the application for a building permit. The plan shall show at a minimum the following. Lot dimensions, driveway limits of pavement, limits of sidewalk, building locations, building footprints matching the architectural plan dimensions, closest distance to nearest property line from each building, lot coverage by structure, lot coverage by structure, parking and paving, new lot designations assigned by the assessor, lot retaining wall locations if applicable, locations of drainage structures, including limits of infiltration areas and the limits of work to be demarcated in the field. This plan shall serve as the basis for an as-built plan of the project upon completion.
So just as a note here, there was a comment by the applicant that this plan be submitted to actually the building department for review. I think it's been the town's practice that with forty Bs, that those reviews take place actually with the zoning board of appeals in addition to the building department.
That would make sense of it since we're the only permitting authority on the forty Bs.
Alright. So should the language be changed ZBA in, in conjunction with the building?
I think that, I think that would be fine.
Okay. Alright, so if everyone's okay with that?
So just read provided to the ZBA and building department.
And building department.
Building commissioner.
Alright, Ed?
Ed Van Kier and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottzelski.
And TJ hurry, I, condition fourteen passes unanimously.
Uh, let's see, okay, uh, prior to occupancy permit sixteen. The affordable unit shall be designated as.
Did you skip number?
Alright, alright, condition fifty. Uh, this permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that twenty days has elapsed after the decision has been filed in the office of the town clerk with no appeal being filed, where that an appeal has been filed within such time is recorded in Barnstable Registry of Deeds. Any person exercising rights under a duly appealed comprehensive permit does so at risk that a court may reverse the permit and that any construction performed under the permit may be ordered undone. I just have a question, Noreen, and I, I know we'll probably do it as stands anyways, but how would somebody be allowed to exercise a forty B permit when the state has to approve that they passed the appeal period? So is it just like a safety?
Well, so there is the twenty day appeal period and then.
It's appealed to the court.
Right, so previously the law was written such if an, um, and a permit was appealed that construction could not take place. The law has been amended such that if you grant the comprehensive permit following the appeal period, the applicant can start their construction, but they do so at their own risk. So that's from the Mass General laws.
So condition fifteen.
Alright, so, uh, voting on fifteen, Ed?
Thank you and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottsenski.
And TJ hurry, I, condition fifteen passes unanimously.
So prior to occupancy permit, item sixteen. The affordable unit shall be designated as.
And just as a comment here, sorry to interrupt, um, the applicant did request the opportunity to designate the affordable units at a later point in the process. Um, I'm aware that this board typically designates the affordable units in advance as opposed to prior to a building permit.
So I guess I would suggest that we designate them now.
Alright.
And if we do designate them, they would be designated as.
Yes, would just be the list, which is the lots that you previously selected, do you want me to read those to you?
Yes, but I've got a question on this, so when we were doing them, we would, it said the information for this is, which includes one two-story ranch home and one base cape, okay, now that makes sense, though I can just read them back. See, the affordable unit shall be designated as lot five, lot nine, lot sixteen, lot twenty, and lot twenty-eight base cape. Lot one modified cape and lot twenty-four two-story ranch. One affordable unit must be sold per three market rate units. A certificate of occupancy for the final market rate unit may not be issued until all affordable units have been completed and granted a certificate of occupancy. All dwellings shall have the same general exterior appearance and construction quality and being conformance with the approved plans. Oh, and it would say also the imperencies that you have that that list includes one two-story ranch home and one base cape with a ten-foot by ten-foot bonus room included.
Alright, very good, so, uh, condition sixteen as amended by Bob? Ed?
Thank you and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottsenski.
TJ hurry, I, condition sixteen passes unanimously.
Condition seventeen, a certified as-built plan shall be provided to the building department, copied to ZBA for review for conformance to the approved plans prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. The as-built plan shall be an overlay on the site layout plan with the addition of the proposed stormwater management system, structures and pipes added to serve as the approved base plan. Any deviations from the approved plan shall be clearly shown in red line over the base plan, which should be faded back for clarity. The as-built shall be certified by both a licensed surveyor and registered engineer that work was performed in conformance with the approved plans and all permits.
Okay.
Thank you and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottsenski.
TJ hurry, I, condition seventeen passes unanimously.
Condition eighteen, the building number shall be posted in accordance with section ninety-nine one as formally assigned by town engineering with the building permit application and approved by the fire inspector, um, on that one. It does have to have a change in a second. So where it says in accordance with so it needs to say that the residence building numbers shall be posted in accordance with section ninety-nine one, a fixing of legible numbers required. Uh, semicolon time limit for compliance. And actually, I think it has to say in here that the applicant shall post. So the building number shall be posted by the applicant in accordance with ninety-nine one, a fixing of legible numbers required with a time limit for compliance. And, and approved by the fire prevention inspector.
Yep, so your time limit would be, uh, probably prior to CO. So in other words, they're expecting you to, uh, determine what, what the time limit would be for compliance.
Alright, so if this, so this is already listed under the prior to occupancy permit, so that would still, wouldn't that still apply? If not, you could just change time limit for compliance to prior to occupancy permit.
Yep.
Okay, so we're okay with that? Alright, uh, Ed?
Thank you and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottsenski.
TJ hurry, I, condition eighteen passes unanimously.
Uh, condition nineteen, utility easement shall be provided granting the town access to the water main hydrant and curb stops in a form acceptable to the town. The fee for review plus filing shall be paid by the applicant. Separate applications for water service shall be made for each dwelling with appropriate plans, including a meter request.
Okay, Ed?
Thank you and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottsenski.
TJ hurry, I, condition nineteen passes unanimously.
Condition twenty, final lottery agent lottery plan and marketing plan shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals prior to issuance of an assert, of a certificate of occupancy.
Alright, Ed?
Thank you and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottzelski.
TJ hurry, I, condition twenty passes unanimously.
Okay, this is under the heading general. Condition twenty-one, the maximum height of the dwelling shall not exceed thirty-five feet.
Ed?
Thank you and I.
Ken?
Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottsenski.
TJ hurry, I, twenty-one passes unanimously.
Twenty-two, where this comprehensive permit is made specifically under Mass General Laws, chapter forty B, section twenty to twenty-three allowing the override of local zoning density. There shall be no as-of-right changes made to the subject property. Any changes requested shall be properly submitted to the zoning board of appeals as provided for under Mass General Laws, chapter forty B.
Okay, Ed?
Thank you and I.
Ken?
Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottsenski.
TJ hurry, I, condition twenty-two passes unanimously.
Condition twenty-three, the development shall be limited to a maximum of twenty-eight three-bedroom dwellings. You just have to put a space in there. With eighty-four total bedrooms, basement space may not be used as bedroom space, nor may studies, offices, bonus rooms, or family rooms be converted to bedroom space. Any private non-bedroom room shall have a minimum four-foot wide cased opening.
Alright, Ed?
Thank you and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottsenski.
TJ hurry, I, condition twenty-three passes unanimously.
Decision twenty-four, single car attached garages shall be provided for twenty-two dwellings, including lots two through thirteen, lot sixteen through twenty, and lots twenty-four through twenty-eight. Garage space may not be converted to living space. These lots shall not have sheds installed, which is a change from condition nine zero dash seventeen, conditions one, two, and nineteen.
Okay. Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottzelski.
And TJ hurry, I, condition twenty-four passes unanimously.
Uh, condition. Condition twenty-five, lots one, fourteen, fifteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three shall be permitted to, shall be permitted a single shed to be sighted a minimum of three feet from the rear or sideline. Said sheds are limited to eight feet by ten feet, eighty square feet. This is a correction for condition number six and number seven, zero ninety dash seventeen permit.
Thank you and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottzelski.
TJ hurry, I, the condition passes unanimously.
Condition twenty-six, the seven affordable year-round, not seasonal, family ownership units shall be included in the subsidized housing inventory, SHI and shall be subject to a deed rider and income guidelines. Certification of compliance with the Affordable Housing Regulation shall be submitted after the sale uh, to the zoning board of appeals, ZBA, and Falmouth Affordable Housing Designee. This certification shall include documentation for each affordable unit is occupied by a qualified owner as their primary residence. The affordable units shall remain affordable in perpetuity with a use restriction recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, copied to the zoning board of appeals and Affordable Housing Designee and shall survive sale. Any resale of an affordable unit shall include the fact that any future owner is subject to all terms and conditions listed herein and as provided in the homeowner documents.
Good.
Ed? Thank you and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottsenski.
TJ hurry, I, twenty-six passes unanimously.
Twenty-seven, exterior parking or storage of any unregistered vehicles on the premises is strictly prohibited. They shall be included in the homeowners association document.
Alright, Ed?
Thank you and I.
Scott?
Gottzelski.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
I already voted.
Oh, I'm sorry, who did I miss, Ed?
You missed me.
I'm sorry, Ken, Ken, sorry.
And Formanai.
TJ hurry, I. Twenty-seven passes unanimously, not this time unfortunately.
Uh, twenty-eight. Uh, condition twenty-eight, the site inspector will be specifically responsible for ensuring adherence to the requirements and soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions in the inspection and approval of the roadway subgrade, gravel base, binder course, and curbing and finish course. At no point shall the contractor construct on a roadway surface that was not inspected and approved by the site inspector. The inspection engineer will specifically be responsible to review the as-built plans for compliance with the approved plans.
Okay, Ed?
Thank you and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottzelski.
TJ hurry, I, twenty-eight passes unanimously.
Uh, condition twenty-nine, all stormwater runoff shall be directed to recharge within the premises. And I just have a question on that, is premises just revert to building versus a site?
So premises would include the entire property?
Okay.
Paul set, Bob?
Yep.
Alright, Ed?
Thank you and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottsenski.
TJ hurry, I, twenty-nine passes unanimously.
Uh, condition thirty, uh, maintenance and repair of dry wells, leaching trenches, catch basin, manholes, and subservive leaching systems in addition to the fences on the property lines in between homes, retaining wall um, and roadway needs a space shall be the responsibility of and added to the homeowners association documents.
Okay, Ed?
Thank you and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Yeah, I, yeah, just a quick question for Noreen. Cause Noreen, I don't know if it's in this further, but at our original permit, there was something that was in the original permit that said if they didn't do something like this, the town had the right to correct?
Yes, so the way this works is you're issuing a modification to that original permit. Uh, you're making specific changes. Anything that you don't make a specific change to remains in full force and effect, so that provision remains.
So my only question was, is this paragraph in that original provision? Are we actually changing the original paragraph that had that included, or is that?
No.
In to this?
No, this is in addition to that.
Okay.
Alright. Do we have your vote, Bob?
Yep.
Alright, Scott?
Scottzonski.
And Ken, we got you, right, I know we already.
You did, but I'll, Ken Formanai.
Alright, Ed, and let's hear it again.
Yeah, thank you and I, TJ hurry, I, uh, thirty passes unanimously.
Uh, condition thirty-one, the town is specifically not waiving fees associated with construction, including but not limited to the water line, water tapping, sleeve and valve, water meters, and services and engineering such as the bond for the street opening permits and building department fees, the plan involves the installation of two town-specific fire hydrant. Is that just supposed to be an end sentence, Noreen?
Uh, no, I just missed the S there, sorry.
Okay, okay.
Yes. High, high period, yeah.
Plan shall be submitted to the Department of Public Works, Water Superintendent. The private roadway shall not be considered for acceptance by the town, as such, the roadway shall be privately owned and maintenance shall be the responsibility of the homeowners association in perpetuity. Any required utility easements shall be in a form and manner as prescribed by the town. Plans shall show location of sewer components and water service. Plans shall state all standards, policies, construction practices, and rules and regulations of the Falmouth Water Department shall be adhered to throughout the duration of the project.
Very good. Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottzelski.
TJ hurry, I, thirty-one passes unanimously.
Condition thirty-two, as-built drawings shall be submitted to the water superintendent and include ties for valves, hydrants, and fittings on the water main. A tie card for each house shall be provided with appropriate distances and locations identified.
Alright, Ed?
Thank you and I.
Ken?
And Formanai.
Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Scott?
Gottzelski.
TJ hurry, I, uh, thirty-two passes unanimously.
Condition thirty-three, the water line construction shall be in accordance with the town's water department standards, water department fees and requirements shall be the responsibility of the developer. The applicant shall conduct a hydrant flow test to determine available flow and pressure to fight a fire and provide the results to the water superintendent and fire chief for approval. The pipe layout, installation, and materials used will ha, will all have to meet Falmouth DPW water division specifications in order to be. In order to be accepted for ownership and maintenance. The procedure for flushing, disinfecting, sampling, pressure testing, and inspection of the water main. Shall be improved by the town water superintendent and overseen by the town designee.
All right. Okay, so I, oh, sorry, well, hold on.
I just have one, I just have one question on this because I know we had the same issue with another project, so. Is there anything here that they actually have to test this prior to building everything? Because the land next door is pretty much open space. And I just want to make sure that, like, didn't happen in another one, that God forbid there was ever a fire there. That these are actually workable. Prior to constructing the houses. Because you're dealing with houses that are five, six feet away from other property lines. It's a very dense area. Is that covered at all? Cause you also have next door auto body, who knows what? And it was that turtle habitat. I don't know if they moved them all, whatever they did, but they did whatever they were doing to move the.
Isn't that a standard we're, we're trying to push going forward with these projects anyway?
Sure.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's a standard we want to push, or if we're the only permitting authority in town on a forty-B, why can't we make the standard?
Well, sure, so let's just assert it prior, prior to construction of any homes.
The applicant shall conduct a hydrant flow test to determine available flow pressure to fight a fire, yeah.
Simple as that.
There you go.
Yeah, I think we have it there. All right, so, uh, condition thirty-three as amended, Ed? Ed, Ed, thank you, and I. Ken?
Ken Formant.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
That's good.
TJ hurry, I. Thirty-three passes unanimously as amended.
Condition thirty-four, dark sky compliant lighting shall be provided and spotlights are prohibited. Any lighting installed to a side or rear dwelling. Or rear of dwellings as required to meet code shall be dark side compliant and not shed light off the subject lot.
All right, Ed?
Thank you, and I.
Ken?
Informant.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
That's good.
TJ hurry, I. Thirty-four passes unanimously.
Uh, condition thirty-five, any changes from plans submitted and approved by the zoning board of appeals shall be submitted to the board for approval prior to the implement, prior. To the implementation of said change. The zoning administrator may make a determination as to whether the changes are substantially as shown. Uh, on, I think it just needs a T for the, on the approved plans. Reference in condition number three above. And essentially minor in nature and can be approved administratively, or whether the applicant must submit the change to the ZBA. Pursuant to seven sixty CMR fifty-six, uh, point oh five. Eleven, changes made prior to an approval may be subject to full hearing and are at risk of the ZBA maybe deny the request. Subjecting any unapproved changes to be ordered undone.
Very good.
Thank you, and I.
Ken?
Informant.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
That's good.
TJ hurry, I. Thirty-five passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, it's eleven.
All right, uh, can we get a vote?
No.
We're at the end. You have one condition.
So let's go to eleven fifteen, but I'm hoping to get it done before that.
I think we all are. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion to continue made by Bob, second by Ken, roll call vote, Ed?
Thank you, and I.
Ken?
Informant.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
That's good.
James?
James Morse begrudgingly, I.
TJ hurry, same, I. All right, almost there.
Condition thirty-six, this permit shall lapse three years from the date at which this decision is filed in the town clerk's office if a substantial change, if a substantial use. Of the comprehensive permit has not sooner commenced, except for good cause shown, as determined by the zoning board of appeals. Which is former condition number twenty-eight of zero nine zero dash one seven.
Thank you, and I.
Ken?
Ken Formant.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
That's good.
TJ hurry, I. Thirty-six passes unanimously.
Noreen, is that, is that last two sentences part of thirty-six, or is that part of the bottom? All other conditions?
It's probably better to list it as thirty-seven.
Okay, so.
All other conditions.
So condition thirty-seven. All other conditions of comprehensive permit number zero nine zero dash one seven and zero nine zero dash one seven M. Not explicitly modified or amended herein shall remain in full force and effect. And we'd have, we'd have to add a vote.
Thank you, and I. All right, so the new thirty-seven as amended, Ed?
Thank you, and I. All right, Ken?
Informant.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
That's good.
TJ hurry, I. Uh, the new thirty-seven passes unanimously.
And then to finish it off, following a motion made by Mr. Dugan and seconded by Mr.
Who's, who's gonna be the second?
Second.
Thank you, Ken.
Mister Foreman, the board voted to grant the findings and conditions for comprehensive permit zero six three dash twenty. For twenty-eight single-family dwellings, seven of which will be affordable in perpetuity.
Pretty good, so one final vote to wrap it off. Ed?
Thank you, and I.
Ken?
Informant.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
That's good. I am tired.
TJ hurry, I. And well, congratulations, it passes. Good work, everyone. I know it's late.
Thank you, and thank you to Attorney Freeman. He's been exceptional to work with.
And thank you to Attorney Freeman. All right, uh, up next discussing, discussing the letter regarding the proposed changes to solar with a vote anticipated. So Ken was kind enough to draft up a letter that I hope everyone had a chance to read. Uh, relaying our, our concerns over to the planning board.
Does anyone have any objections, modifications?
I think Mary would like to chime in. Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say, um, I was curious. I know, Ken, you talked about this, um. Doing the, the solar piece, which you have done a wonderful job on. I just was curious. If you had taken a look at the other articles that were proposed by the planning board.
No.
As well.
If the short answer is no, I have not.
Well, I, I just think it would be great if there were a package where we looked at all of them. Instead of just the one.
Well, I don't know if there, how many they're taking up at the next, uh, their next discussion. Are they taking them all?
I, I don't have a clue. You know, the only thing I've seen, Ken, is what was in the newspaper, and frankly, it's, the type is so small.
Right, so this just, uh, I, you know, I became aware of this particular article, which actually was supposed to be discussed Tuesday, and they apparently didn't notice it properly, so. It's been postponed to the twenty-third, so that works in our favor in terms of getting the letter to them prior to the hearing.
Certainly does.
Actually, that I, I understand, just as a clarification, that the notification issue. Was with the newspaper, not with the planning board, that the planning board had duly sent the information in.
Yeah.
But perhaps the paper had a glitch.
I'm not casting blame on the planning board. I'm just saying it wasn't, for whatever reason, it wasn't noticed properly. Uh, and therefore, uh, the hearing was postponed. Um, whoops. Knock yourselves out looking at the other articles.
Well, I don't, I don't even have copies of them.
I nominate TJ.
Yeah, that's, there you go.
To review, to review the articles? To, to review the, uh, pending articles?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that there's more than just that one.
There usually are not a whole lot. You know, there's. This is actually not a planning initiated by the planning board. It's petitioner article.
Oh. Well, uh, just despite my failing eyesight, I will take a look at the proposed. Uh, zoning changes and get back to everyone on the next meeting.
Thank you.
But if, can, can we just get a vote on this so we know we're gonna submit this one? We can submit some additional letters if we would like.
Well, why don't, why don't we add just a sentence at, and at the bottom of it, Ken, then that were, we didn't have. The rest of them and.
Well.
They can.
My feeling is, let's not dilute, let's not dilute the impact of this letter by.
Well, I, I don't think it dilutes it at all. I think it strengthens it to say that we're looking at all of them. Like, I think it. If you just do this one, it kind of seems like.
But this speaks.
Why are we doing this one and not all of them?
Because this one speaks specifically to the petitioner article, which is not initiated by the.
Well, I, I. I guess I would, I would disagree that that's, I mean, I just don't feel that that's strong enough argument for not doing it, doing all of them. If we're going to look.
We shouldn't do them all, but they could be done separately.
So maybe we can submit this one and then send a separate email that says that the board had a discussion. They're gonna review the other articles that are also being presented for comment.
There you go.
I like.
There's always a solution.
There always is.
It's cause it's late and I want to go home.
Keep this one focused.
All right, so let's have, uh, let's have a vote on Ken's, uh, letter.
Thank you, and I.
Ken?
Informant.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
That's good.
James?
James Morse, I.
TJ hurry, I. All right, thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Uh, I, I have a, I just a quick question, TJ. I'm not holding it up. Did you actually make a motion to accept this, or we just voted?
Voted, wait.
Did we do the motion first? I know it's late at night. If not, let's redo the motion and just support it again, just so we don't have any.
Motion to accept Ken's letter.
There you go.
Second by Bob. There we go. All right, very good. All right, sorry about that. Uh, board discussion, is there anything?
Time to go.
Um, one thing I wanted to clarify based upon our conversations last week, I think the board was not interested in having a pre-meeting. Uh, with the building commissioner and, uh, town manager with regard to our. Uh, board-wide meeting in March. Was that the consensus? Yes?
Yes.
All right, just, uh, checking in with everyone on that, just making sure we're all on the same page. All right, anything else for a discussion?
And any idea when we're gonna be meeting in person, Noreen? Anything?
There's no timeline offered.
Okay, then I'm done.
All right. Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Uh, all right, we will see everyone here, uh, back February twenty-fifth.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night. I like your background, Ken.